Now that all the council members are present, I will call the meeting to order, the November 15th meeting, the City of West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Accessory Agency and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening, and we have no items to report. And we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Mike Sanchez. Please come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, and I would like to also thank you again for your service, and I hope you had a wonderful Veterans Day. As noted, on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1, but it provides an opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item to, please fill out a Request to Speak card and return it to the clerk. In front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We accept the Request to Speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read, and the council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept any further speaking requests on that particular agenda item. If you're addressing a specific agenda item, please turn your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the Request to Speak cards and on the podium, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Guy Stevenson.
I don't want you to think that my delivery system is harsh, or seems like it's in a threatening manner. That's part of the military in me, and I'm sorry. But the one thing I will tell you is that I respect the police of West Sac. I'm going to be an advocate. I am going to stay on this agenda of the police, where they need more police, but they also need more firemen. You know, this city is growing, you're going to put in a bridge that's going to cost several, several millions of dollars, so that means there's going to be a lot of people coming over here. And, you know, you've got people coming from, like I've told you before, you've got people coming from the Bay Area, you've got people coming from Sac that are coming over here and doing crimes, and it's getting out of hand. So, the only thing I'm going to say to you is that I wish, and I hope it's in your budget coming up, is that you can hire more police for more safety over here, for the elderly people, the younger people, and to keep the fentanyl and all the rest of the drugs off the street. Because the other day, when I talked to a chief investigator with the coroner's office, I was amazed on how many people have actually OD'd in this county. The size of this county, and all the dope that's in this is saturated. So, I'm just asking in your budget if you would even consider to maybe give an incentive to the police, or hire more police to keep these streets safe. There's obviously not enough on the streets here in West Sacramento, and I don't want to see anybody lateral out of here, you know, go through their post-training, and learn how to be a good cop, and then leave and go to another agency because they're not getting paid what they should be getting paid. And you also have a lot of good Public Works people over here, you know, all your Public Works people. I've talked to them, they're outstanding, you ask them something, they'll deliver it. I appreciate that. And the one last thing that I'd like to say, there was a tragedy in Los Angeles today, where 25 recruits got hit by a driver. I don't know if it was an intentional act, but these are all recruits that are going to be cops, and a lot of them are in critical condition because of some, excuse the term, idiot. And these guys were going to be Los Angeles' finest, Los Angeles County Sheriff, so I'm asking everybody to keep them in their prayers, because we need cops, we don't need to lose them from stupidity. Thank you very much, have a great night.
Robin Davis.
Hi, I'm Robin, and I live in a 160-square-foot, semi-off-grid, tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I'm aware that I'm living illegally due to not meeting the current zoning and code standards, but your standards are out of reach and unaffordable, not just for me, but the majority of the population. I've been denied a temporary use permit, denied off-grid options, denied affordability, and threatened with notices to abate, while this entire state has a severe housing shortage, lack of shelters, and thousands on our streets living in whatever they can to survive. I've expressed to the departments and to you for the past two years that I am willing to meet all of your standards, but I've asked the city to meet me in the middle by making it affordable. I have requested proportional impact fees based on square footage, as well as an impact fee payment plan. I'm not asking for a waiver, or even a reduction, like your new impact fee reduction pilot program does for wealthy developers. And yet, I've still been met with resistance, and even advised by your community development director, to instead just simply leave the city, or go rent somewhere instead. Proportional impact fees and a payment plan would be the only way I could realistically, maybe, meet your standards. Paying your impact fees is not a priority when I don't have access to water. My limited resources need to go towards hooking up to all the other utilities you are forcing me to hook up to, in addition to all your permits, materials, and labor to do so. I've been told these impact fees go to the overall infrastructure of the city, and that you need this money from me to maintain the quality of life of residents, while I still don't have access to water. So it's unclear how the city defines quality of life, and which residents get the chosen privilege access to the basic needs these impact fees hold hostage. No one should have to go into a lifetime of debt to get access to water. This entire state has a priority issue with its housing policies, and people are desperate for change. I've listened to other council meetings where our city manager empathized with developers on how high the cost of your own fees are and the cost to build are, while justifying more programs and more incentive to benefit these wealthy developers and your revenue. This current system excludes the average person from the building process completely and intentionally. Residents will not be subjected to what government and developers choose to build for us forever, while our options continue to be narrowed to your luxury on the river, or your government subsidies on West Capitol. I don't want your luxury, and I don't need other taxpayers' money if you just let me legally live within my means. To reiterate, I'm asking for proportional impact fees and an impact fee payment plan, both of these options. Please request the departments work on some kind of payment plan. They need that direction from you. Please include this on future meeting agenda. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping.
Andrea Montano, or Montania. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager and Staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Andrea, and I am a future, also a tiny house dweller, in the county of Sacramento, and I'm currently working with my city officials in citrus sites and county officials in Sacramento to help bridge some communication on how tiny homes can actually work for our communities. I think the problem is, is that Housing and Community Development and the California ADU law has put a lot of these parameters in place, but they haven't given our local government ways or recipes on how to implement these plans successfully. Sorry, this is, it's hard to be up here. So, as an affordable housing advocate, what I've been working with my local officials is goals to amend the ordinance to include text amendments where movable tiny homes can be permissible as full-time dwelling units. And I have included a list in the public comments on the last page of all of the California ordinances that I've worked with throughout the state of California, where they are allowing tiny homes as permissible accessory dwelling units, as primary dwelling units on standalone properties, in cluster developments, and also in tiny house communities. We think of the affordable housing ladder as helping people on the first rung of the ladder, which is usually those that need to be, you know, the unhoused. But once they receive services in, you know, our low-income housing and our safe stays, and they get, you know, kind of acclimated, where do they graduate to? You know, I'm also a sandwich generation, where I'm a grandmother, and I take care of my parents, and also my kids, who are adults, and I want to make sure that they can afford to live here in California, and, you know, and grow up in this beautiful state that we all live. And so, I'm here today to offer solutions of how we've worked with several other counties throughout the state to amend our tiny ordinances, working with the plan development, working with the community development managers, and to also help you guys meet your RITA numbers, which have been established by the Housing and Community Development. So with that, I will say that in the city of San Diego, the county of Santa Clara, and now working with Mendocino County, HTC applauds our efforts, because there's so overlooked opportunities in the portability and the flexibility of tiny homes. And there's so much to be said about difference without substance, where my house is a very beautiful home. It's not a homeless home. It has a Bosch dishwasher, and it's very economically built, it has a steel frame and structured insulation panels, and I would love to be able to share how that quality of life can be more efficient for folks like me and a lot of the other people in the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Rhonda Pope Flores.
Short people, sorry. I'm just going to, I guess, do like this gentleman, and kind of be a broken record. I see a lot of development and plans, the Washington District in particular, and there's still no historic preservation policy. So right now, you're operating on a blank piece of paper. And historic properties with no enforcement for the community to bring to, have enforced, is available. That's not acceptable. There needs to be a historic preservation plan put in place. You need to consult with, you have local, your historical society, which I believe has submitted a recommendation for historic preservation, and it was not accepted. So, you moving forward on projects without having the proper policies in place is really irresponsible. So I urge you to please develop a historic preservation policy. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak regarding Item 12, the consideration of resolution for renaming the Tower Bridge Gateway to, I hate to say the word, Cabaldon Parkway. That really irks me, it just kind of gags me. Last time we were here, we, the council agreed to approve a resolution.
This is the opportunity for speaking on matters not on the agenda.
Excuse me, on general public, I can speak on anything.
You're wrong.
No, no, absolutely not. Yeah.
Just, I would like to let you know that this item is on the agenda, so you could...
But I'm not going to be here. I'm not going to stay until Item 12 is addressed.
We're going to bring it right up next.
Yeah.
It's coming up right after.
No, but, okay, but the point is, the point is, during general public comment, we may speak on anything that is in the jurisdiction of the city. Is that true, or no? I'm sorry?
Not on the agenda.
No, you're telling me that during general public comment, I cannot speak on an item that's on the agenda? I think you're wrong. I think you're dead wrong. The general public comment is general, on anything that is within the jurisdiction of the city. Yeah, no, you're wrong. You know, you definitely are wrong. I mean, you've not attended enough city council meetings, obviously. And so, and so, are you telling me that I'm not allowed to speak now?
Do you have anything else you'd like to bring up at this time?
Yeah, yeah, because the timer is going, and he interrupted me.
Is there anything else? You can, the next agenda, Consent is up next, and...
Yeah, I really appreciate that, but I'm a little bit of a tickler for civil rights and technicalities, and if I have the right to speak on any subject, I shouldn't be interrupted by the city attorney, and so I'm really baffled. So now, first of all, we're not able to come in here and express our frustration, now we're supposed to speak in a certain manner, and it can't be sound threatening, it can't sound anything that is construed to interrupt. And so, I'm just really baffled here. I'm really baffled. This is a serious civil rights violation, and I'm making that, putting that in the record, and that's not okay. I'm not giving up my civil rights. Absolutely not. Or my First Amendment, thank you. And so, under no circumstance should I, do I believe that this bridge should be named for a living person, because that's against the law. And also, most importantly, we should name the bridge after our local tribe. That, I mean, we would honor and respect, I think that was what John Archuleta was suggesting. Now that would be proper to honor the natives of this land with that, but not with some person that took away district elections and made at-large elections. It's just, they're civil rights violations, and how can we honor someone like that? You know? It's just really, really, really bad. And so, we're going to follow, I'm going to follow up with that, and I'm going to let you know that you cannot violate my First Amendment rights, and so you need to check yourself. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Timothy Allen.
I think I can make do with this. I mean, you guys see all these people here, after all these announcements came up about the bridge, you guys can name it after anyone, literally anyone. There's a lot of religious people here, there's a lot of Native American people here. Name it after a tribe, name it after a saint. There's a lot of Catholics here. Saint Michael, the holidays are coming up. Saint Nicholas, he's a saint. Name it after anyone but the former mayor, seriously? That's huge, middle finger. Great way to represent your people right after an election. Keep on going, guys. Keep on going. More ammunition. So why am I really here? I'm here because there's no housing. I'm here because my city council members want to name a bridge after a former mayor. That's a slap on the face of this person right here. The current mayor. That's a slap on the face. You guys spend millions of dollars on a bridge, you guys spend a couple million dollars on a path. What do people really need? Listen to them, they're right here, your people, that you're supposed to represent. You're not representing them. Now, constructive criticism. Constructive criticism is cutting regulation. Why is there so much crime? Inflation is through the roof. I personally have to cut back on groceries, on food, so that way I'm not in the negative on my budgeting. It's not my fault, I work a full-time job at Goodyear, but it's not enough. My $20 an hour pay is not enough to live in my own city. Go on Zillow Rents, $2,000 for a 500-square-foot apartment, come on, guys. Who can afford that? Maybe they can, in Sacramento, because that's where they seem to be moving from, that in San Francisco. We need to take care of our people first. Our West Sacramento citizens come first, before they do, before they do. They come first. Your people that voted for you, people in Vacaville didn't vote for you, people in Sacramento didn't vote for you, people in San Francisco didn't vote for you, they did, and they're here showing out. Listen to them. It's very disappointing. Very disappointing. You guys want to waste our time. It's okay, I'll waste three minutes of yours. Good job, guys.
We have no additional requests to speak on Item Number 1. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our Consent Agenda, is Item 2 through 10. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentations by any of the members of our...
Can we remove 9?
Okay. 7? 7? Okay, we'll start with Item 6. And after we go through all these items, each item will have a public comment opportunity. And so, Item 6, thank you, Jason. And thank you so much for, great, wanted to be able to say thank you so much for the great, you know, opportunity for the community, it was well-attended, and even the press covered that there was a meeting tonight, so you did the outreach in that way. So I appreciate it, and I just want to hear from you a little bit of the feedback, because after, you know, we received the agenda item in print before the community contributed their feedback, I wanted to hear from them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. We had about 139 folks attending the public meeting on Monday, and I think in general, we received some really good feedback. Interestingly enough, the comment cards, we received five comment cards over the course of the evening, and none of them actually pertained to the modification to the engineering design. There were a lot of just "good job", and others had provided some technical feedback, like adding a rapid flashing beacon to let folks know when you're on Fifth Street that the bridge is up, some other good ideas like that. There was a comment provided by one of the organizations that actually commented on the EIR regarding bat habitat, and the need to have that habitat integrated into the new bridge, which we are planning on doing. While our engineer was there, I asked specifically how much of the habitat was available, and so we're going to talk a little bit more with that organization to see if we can maximize the amount of habitat available. But in general, I think we received some positive feedback, and since then, I have not heard any complaints about the modified design that would reduce the amount of property takes that would be required as part of the project.
Are there any other questions? All right, if not, thank you so much, Jason. I'll open this item up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk? Mike Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for discussing this item tonight. I'm here to say thank you for hearing our family's history, hearing our issue, and taking into consideration other alternatives for the new access street to Second Street. This has been a very stressful time in my family, but we're very grateful for you guys listening to us and allowing us to come and speak, and then also for staff, the efforts that staff put into making a change on such a short notice and a short timeframe. I realize that there was a lot of work put into that. We did not submit a comment, I did not submit a comment, rather, on Monday, a comment card, but I reserved my comments for tonight, where I could talk to you in person and share that with you, that we approve. We're excited to see this adjustment. Actions speak louder than words, and your actions definitely helped my family out, and took into account our property, our issue, and we hear you, and we appreciate it, and I think the community does as well. Moving forward on development projects, this is a small town, I think you're hearing that tonight, this is a small town, people know, everyone knows everyone. In future projects, it's easy to look at the grand design, and the grand design is exciting. This bridge is going to be a big thing for this area, it's a big project, it's an expensive project. But moving forward, I ask that we look at projects and see who they affect. If it means there's, a lot of outreach was done, but ask yourself, look at a map, who lives there? We might know them, they're our neighbors. And in this case, I feel like my neighbors, and you guys came and you heard us, but that way, future families that are encountering this, that we could do things a little bit different in the future. And I think that's something, I'm seeing that change here in West Sacramento, and I hope that continues. From my family, the Sanchez, Duran, and Marquez family, thank you so much for our home, and thank you so much for everything you put into this, I greatly appreciate it. I yield my remainder of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for your remarks, but also thank you to Jason. I appreciate you calling out staff and thanking them. This bridge has been a long time, of course, in the making, and I'd like to rehash sort of the history of it, but it's an important project for the community at large to help, A, have a replacement for an aging bridge that's over 100 years old, and B, just to help bring new infrastructure to that area of County on Third and C. And so, I'm glad staff, really appreciate it. Jason's done a terrific job in a number of areas, and I just want to say thank you to Jason for the long hours and the work put into this, and to the city manager and staff and the council, for kind of having their back and making sure we listened, and this is the way the process should work. So appreciate it, and staff, again, thank you very much.
And I echo all that, so thank you to everybody for coming together, and for the residents bringing this to our attention, and time enough so we can make some modifications to what was happening there and preserving your home. So I'm glad this turned out to work out really well for all of us, win-win for all of us, so thank you so much. Next is Item Number, any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk? No more, no more requests to speak on items. Okay, and Item Number 7, we have Economic Development and Housing, consideration of assignment of purchase agreement for 20, 2525 Jefferson Boulevard, and Resolution 22-138 for budget authorization of $3.4 million from Fund 106, and... I just pulled this item so that it could be explained, and the public could understand what this was about. Thank you.
Great. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Diane Richards here, Economic Development Manager. Yes, as you may have heard, the Palma D'Isi family announced earlier this year that they would be closing the restaurant after... would be closing the restaurant after operating that restaurant as a community gathering space for over eighty-seven years. And the family found a broker and found a buyer for the property. That buyer has been evaluating the property, the two-acre property, and considering what could be done with it. And the city learned of some of the plans and engaged in a conversation with that developer about what the future might be for that property. And it's been in the works for about six months, so it was nearing the end of their due diligence period. And we heard that the building may go away, the entire building may go away. And owing to the community's history and, you know, the history of the building there, even before the city was formed, we felt that there was an opportunity for us to influence the outcome and perhaps have a stake in influencing what could be done there with the historic portion of the building, as well as, you know, preserving a landmark of some kind and a community gathering spot. So we are proposing to acquire the developer's interest in the property. They have negotiated a purchase price, which is essentially the land value for the two-acre property. We would like to have the opportunity to do that so that we can explore historic preservation options of a portion of the building or preserving a landmark so that the community's history and, you know, all that the Club Pheasant has been to this community can be recognized and remembered for this community. And so we don't know exactly what that might be. We would like to have the time to explore that with community and development partners. And acquiring this assignment of this purchase agreement will give us the opportunity to do that and engage in conversations with other partners about preserving a portion of it and also economically developing the remainder of the property because it is a great, great location, a great site. And I think there will be great interest in it.
If I could jump in here just on a couple of other points. First of all, perhaps questions about, you know, how the city is funding this acquisition. I think it's important to note that the funding source proposed for this is our, essentially our Economic Development Fund. These are funds that are typically used for infrastructure and creating other opportunities. Haven't used a lot of it in this area, but the purpose and intent of this is the same. The other part I want to emphasize is while we, as Diane laid out, we don't know exactly what is going to happen. I can tell you what isn't going to happen. And the reason the city and the council had such an interest in this is to preserve that history, preserve the legacy of this property, give us an opportunity to create a space that really means something to the community. And so in terms of what isn't going to happen, there are no plans to, for the city to go in and demolish buildings and put in fast food or gas stations or any of the other rumors that were out there. We're not saying that was going to necessarily happen, but a lot of the intent behind this is to preserve, or I'm sorry, to protect that outcome from happening if the free market were to kind of have its way. It's a great site, it's a great location, it's a great history. We see a lot of opportunity for potential going forward. We're going to take some time and have conversations with potential, you know, partners that could help lead to the outcome that we're all hoping for. And we'll be back, we anticipate in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three with more updates on what's next. But we recommend doing this mainly for those reasons. One is to preserve the history and the legacy of a unique property in our city. And then two, we really truly see it as a potential opportunity, a great opportunity to create a space that everyone can be proud of. I want to also, Diane didn't say it, but I'll recognize her, probably the project that had the most comparable, you know, features to this one is when we did the Washington Firehouse. You know, that was a little different because the city owned that property. It was sort of sitting there for twenty years and was at risk of demolition and to a point of no return. Diane was the project manager on that one. We ended up with a partner that did the historic preservation. The city sold to that group essentially at fair reuse value, which allowed them to put in the investment to bring it up to what it is today. Now you look at it, you wouldn't know the history of it unless you go in there and you see the old pictures. But that building very likely was on its way to not being around much longer if we hadn't done something similar. So that's how we see this project rolling out. We'll take some time to evaluate it. We'll put it out to development partners, hopefully get a great partner in there that will do something that includes food service ideally. But a lot of that is to be determined. But what isn't in the plan is to go in and demolish the whole thing. There are historic parts of it that we want to preserve and make the most of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions among, yes? Councilmember LaDesma?
I'll wait till after public comment.
I think there is public, did you want, okay, so do you want to wait till after public comment? Okay. Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, this public comment, we'll open it up for public comment. Alfred Melbourne.
Greetings, everyone. Mayor, even council members, a pleasure to be able to be here and to speak on these topics. And I always learn a lot. I wish I had more time to really just be here and kind of just be a fly on the wall and soak up as much as I can. I'm always learning to work in the community. And I'm here tonight to speak on this preservation of the site now. And it's news to me, and I'm all for preserving the history of West Sacramento. That's great. And there's going to be funds that have to be used for that. I would have to say first and foremost that it's obvious that we need to start spending funds north of the freeway. And I could think of a lot of different areas that we could redevelop and bring to life to uplift the youth in our community and other segments, provide shelter space somewhere else, or do a lot of different things that we could use that money for if it's for community development. I'm just speaking on a topic off the top of my head that as an organization, Three Sisters Gardens has been third in line for a building three times now, and it's moved into other hands. And we're looking for space to help legitimize ourselves as an organization so that we could take positive steps moving forward, helping our youth and grow in our capacity. So I'm not going to, I'll be shameless and say that there's other organizations, there's groups out there that need support to make it to the tomorrows so that we can have spaces that can be preserved for history too. If there's no new spaces being built, well, what are we going to be preserving out there? There's nothing for us to really fall back on. So as the ground keeps being eaten up and places sold and getting further and further out of the reach of, say, a regular common person over here, especially someone that might be system impacted. But sure, great. I would hope that, I mean, you guys come together with a plan to preserve the site using other funds. And I know that the site's going to be great. We know that Southport area is just totally blowing up and out of control, and everybody loves it. Great. You know what I mean? But here I am, Representative Broderick Bright Neighborhood Association, a group that came together out of necessity, right? And we're advocating for resources to continue to come to the north area, what is now District Two and District One. So as you guys go about contemplating this project and using all this money, just keep things like that in mind. There's other areas, and it's not all for limelight recognition. The need is really great in our neighborhood, and all of you guys know that. Let's start putting some focus where the need is greatest. Thank you.
We have no additional comments on this item.
Thank you. Did you submit a request to speak, hard?
My apologies. Rhonda Pope Flores.
Missed me on the last one too, but now I'm going to use this nifty little, how do you do this? Wait. Oh, that's sorry. Okay. So I guess I'm going to echo the same way Alfred did, three point four million dollars. I don't know what is in the Economic Development and Housing Fund. And I'm not sure what the policy is on that because I didn't prepare for that. So I apologize. Next time I will. But I agree. I'm not sure, okay, if we had a historic preservation policy, you wouldn't have to buy the Pheasant Club to protect it because you'd have a historic preservation policy that would do that for you without having to buy it. So this is a classic perfect example of my emphasis on preserving historic properties. I am a freak about that. I mean, I bought, I've bought so many, I bought an old church in Winters that I lose money on every month. But anyways, if we had these policies in place, and I tend to think that maybe we deter from policy, I don't know what the, you know, the investment policy says, but three point four million dollars to buy a historic building that you're, if I heard right, you're going to help developers. And I just don't think that the city of West Sacramento should be in the business of helping developers like that. I think if the city of West Sacramento is going to work on doing community things, it should be the city of West Sacramento because that gets sticky and complicated. And then you have to give them a discount, like, you know, because they can't pay, you know, their portion of it. And I've seen it over and over. It happened with the Rivers, before it was the Rivers, there was a big discount that was given to them, and none of the things that were promised were actually given to us, like a community center. We were promised that a long time ago, never got that. So no more babbling. I just think that it is peculiar. And I think that there's, there needs to be a priority of what the importance is for economic development and housing. And we had a gentleman here earlier, speaking of housing, that is a very big deal. And so why is that not a focus? Three point four million dollars is a lot of money to be putting toward a building that was a restaurant. And I'm just finding it hard to understand if the city of West Sacramento is getting in the restaurant business or what it's going to be. But there's my two cents. Thank you.
We have no additional comments.
Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is item number, oh, sorry, we want, we want to speak on this. And Councilmember LaDesma.
I, I'll tee it up. So one of the things that I was concerned about for this space that I heard from residents in Southport was, in addition to the historic nature of the building, a lot more of what I heard was, well, we don't want it to turn into a gas station. Or, oh my gosh, we don't need, we don't need more fast food restaurants. And this really is the heart of Southport. Now, I think sometimes, I think sometimes residents, and I probably was guilty of it myself before I actually gone on city council, attribute more power to the city than we actually have, right? If we were to fully allow the free market, then the free market dictates what the market dictates. And if, if the market dictates that the most money can be made on a gas station, then guess what's going to get put there? A gas station. And if the market dictates that it, a fast food restaurant is what is going to make the most money, then that's, that is what will get put there. And the city would have almost no control over that because that's, that's the free market. And in addition to protecting the historic nature of the building, for me, I felt like even more the opportunity was coming in and allowing for the potential for economic development. And for me, what economic development meant was, that is a huge space. And so you have the restaurant, but then you have the potential to build additional opportunities there for small businesses that normally owners, BIPOC owners, LGBTQ plus, women-owned businesses would not be able to afford, particularly in Southport, and particularly in the heart of Southport, to be able to open a business there. And so what we have here is what does the city actually have control over and what are our values? So in addition to wanting to protect that, that history, there is a huge opportunity there to also reflect our values and to come in and allow for opportunities for new businesses to happen. And again, outside of the city actually owning that land and having a stake in it, that's the only thing we actually can control. If the property were to completely sell, then the property sells. And so I think there are very limited opportunities for us as the city, as, to be able to go in and do these types of opportunities, this type of economic development. And I'm really excited about the potential of what we will be able to do in regards to opening up opportunities for communities that potentially would not be able to have a small business in Southport.
Councilmember LaDesma.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague from early, I'm not much of what she said, but she knows I have a passion for small business. And it's been something I've been concerned about is space and how we can preserve our space or have space for small businesses. And it's been a real hard thing in Southport. It's all over the city, to be honest. It's hard to find space, flexible space, usable space. This one was particularly important, a strategic value, I think. And the opportunity came right for us, I think, given the set of circumstances we had. And as you pointed out, and we pointed out, staff pointed out, this is the potential outcomes of that corner. And, and not to say that those wouldn't have happened, but they could have. And I think that's where we understand our powers of land use and zoning powers, that owners by right can do things on properties if they're zoned that way. But we're not going that way. And I think the point, two things. One is thanks to staff. I think the entire council came to staff and was unanimous in sort of what can we do? And we knew the potential outcomes, but more so taking a leap of faith about what is this a template for? Where could we go next? And so to staff, Diane, particularly you, and Aaron and the team, just putting your collective heads together and see what the outcome is, and kind of how it worked toward it, to be able to execute on this is a big thing. And I would also say as a part of that, the second thing is, don't, don't waste the effort or the, or the, don't let the effort or the strategy we had go in vain because there's still needs in this community. We've struggled to maintain locally owned small businesses across the city and find space for them. And I think that's the point, Councilmember Early's getting at. And there's something, time, pandemic, other things that we just couldn't get to, something I've been wanting to do for some time. But this is sort of it, where you could go. And so I'd urge council to think about that kind of policy going forward in terms of how you could utilize the funds. We've, there's tremendous tools in the city of West Sacramento. We've done a tremendous job of having revenue streams that could help do the kind of things where exactly what we're doing in the Pheasant Club, exactly what we did on the Firehouse and Washington Bright, Broderick Neighborhood. And we could do in other neighborhoods. And I think if we just get focused on it, go to work, it takes work, and it's nerdy, wonky work that has to get done because there's a lot of bridges to cross, a lot of things by way of policy. I know the Economic Development Housing Department would have to do, but it'll be worth it because you would see small businesses being able to get spaces that they want. It's not just West Sacramento has a problem. It's a chronic problem really in the Western United States more than anywhere else. And I think it's worth, it's worth exploring because those are locally owned, they could be looking, people of color that can open their business, as you pointed out, or just a locally owned business. And I think that's super important, and we have that opportunity. I'd also want to take the opportunity to thank the Palma D'Essi family. This is the only item that we, that we have on the agenda. This is my last full agenda or meeting, so I get to say these things. But thank them for their years of, their family's years of serving this community. I came to West Sacramento in the early nineties, and my wife lived down Jefferson when it was a two-lane road and you just go out to the Pheasant Club and keep going, keep going, and go left. And it's been a hallmark, I've been going there since I was a kid, and I think we all have at some point or another. And I, for one, I'm happy for them that they're able to exit the way they want to exit. I'm happy for us that we get, the city and the community gets to hold on to that historic building. But I appreciate their patience and their, and their, that thank them for their years of service to our community. They sponsored Little Leagues, they've sponsored events, they've hosted birthdays, retirements, you name it, they've hosted it. I see Mr. McGowan and the audience tonight. Many a thing have happened at the Club Pheasant and fund and otherwise. And just want to say thank you to them in public. And Diane, thank you again for all your help.
Thank you. Mayor Porta Morosco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're not going to always agree about everything, but there is one thing I think we could all agree upon, and that is that the Pheasant, Club Pheasant was in this city in its grandeur, taking up that space well before many of us ever took our first step in West Sacramento. And so while I wasn't, I can't take any credit for championing this effort, I will say that I do support it. if it's not our own personal history. When it comes down to West Sacramento, there are people either want to identify our city with West Capitol Avenue, or they know that the Club Pheasant's been there. Okay? And, and I will say that initially, I was concerned about where the funding would be for this type of acquisition. And the one thing I wanted to protect was Measure N. Back in 2018, my colleague, Mr. Ledesma and I were signatories on that Measure N. And that was to support public safety, but also inclusive of economic development and other community improvements. And the vision was directed at the areas of the city that didn't get impact fees, the areas that were not going to receive development. And when we talk about investments there, we want the, directed to places like Sacramento Avenue, or improvements to Bright Park, or improvements on the, you know, northern side of town, and not in investments such as those that we're talking about tonight. So with that, I'm actually supportive of the way it's being funded. I also think that the, the points that my colleagues make are very persuasive. The opportunity here is in the vision. We can think creatively and create opportunities for equity and opportu, and, and opportunities for, for folks that wouldn't normally be traditionally represented in our community to have a space. And we get to control it. Frankly, I think that we got to remember that there's community outside of the walls that we're sitting in tonight. We are a city of 55,000, give or take. We have point 00, 001% that are sitting here tonight. And thank you all for being here, by the way. We do appreciate the feedback and the attention to what happens in our city. I know there are a lot of things that you all can be doing tonight, other than to being here. But I will say that I have to take my hat off and respect that the Club Pheasant is a landmark in our city. I can't imagine our city not having at least, I can't imagine looking at the corner of that, of that area without looking at the place that I see every Friday when I go to my Rotary Club meetings. So with that stated, thank you, Diane, and thank you staff for your investment in this effort. I am in support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alcala.
And I want to know, everyone to know that I also support this measure. Let me tell you why. One, the historic significance of the building. That's really important. We have very few historical buildings in the area. And I think a bunch of us can remember going to Club Pheasant at least a few times in our lifetime, those of us that are longtime residents. Two, the incredible economic opportunity that we have here. I mean, we can bring businesses in. Many people here want businesses, but they can't afford some of the incredibly expensive, you know, retail rents that are out there. And I think that's something we, as a city, may be able to have some control over in helping small businesses start up. Also, just the jobs, the jobs for local, local hire, real important. So those are some of the reasons I think this is an excellent investment. And we haven't forgotten about the rest of the groups out there, Mr. Melbourne. We know that we have a lot of, of folks that want to see development in their area. And I think all the council is in agreement that we're going to be focusing in some of those areas that you mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. And, and I appreciate my colleague's statements here as it relates to the purchase of the Pheasant Club and contributions from our public comment that have been presented to us. We don't ignore those. In fact, we, we ponder on them when we're having closed session discussions about what, what are the pros and cons of purchasing this? And I think we also know things that aren't spoken in public, but we also personally know our experiences at the Pheasant Club and connection with the family. During COVID, I was really concerned about the Pheasant Club losing, you know, to the closure as a result of the extended time. And, and I know, like, like them, every, and every other restaurant, they were struggling to survive. And I was really appreciative for the Support Dreams Initiative that the Chamber of Commerce produced. But also, you know, Rob was running out videotaping, saying, hey, look at the delicious food, look at these wonderful raviolis, and wanting to incentivize people to come out and, and purchase their food. And, you know, the Palma Desi family, as you know, has, have utilized the Pheasant Club as a way to contribute back to the community in so many ways. I, I don't think we could put a number on their contributions and how I think they've touched each and every family here in our city, whether it be directly or indirectly. They have helped a lot on Little League, and they've made Little League, you know, just significant here in West Sacramento, which is why Memorial Park, you know, when the fight came up, it may not have been directly the Palma Desis, but it was the Palma Desi plus everybody else that have coalesced around an important resource for our children, for our youth. And that, that is who they are. That is what they, they brought to the table, is a community that stands for our future, for our youth. And that, that's why I appreciated, you know, the, the Pheasant Club and making sure that they succeeded and thrived during the pandemic. So when I heard about the sale myself, I was really concerned. First thing I did was Texas City Manager, what? A gas station? We, it caught all of us by surprise, except for, you know, when that was produced, we, you know, none of us were aware. And, I mean, taking a look at and exploring the options, and the one that landed on us today, and the resources that we have to contribute, and the particular funding source that I heard, you know, from a member of the audience about how it can be used. And it, it is directly for this impact, and it could be used citywide. And we do have resources, other funding sources that Mayor Potemar Roscoe had mentioned that she was, you know, seeking to preserve for other uses in the city. And, and we are planning that as far as a big picture. So I just want to say that it's, it's something that is, you know, in our planning for the future to continue, not only just the Pheasant Club, but citywide, to preserve places like the Pheasant Club, or, or programs, or resources, so that, you know, the community can do well. And I just want to appreciate all the hard work that Diane, thank you so much for standing there so patiently for so long. This was a very rapid approach to get where, to where we're at today. I know you, you spent a lot of long days putting this together. And we have very experienced and talented staff, and it's because of that that we can get to this point where we are today. It was a, I'm glad that the negotiation arrived to where we can purchase the Pheasant Club. Otherwise, we would have ended up with some, something out there that I don't think the community would have liked. And now we have an opportunity to, you know, it's not so much working with the developer, it's working with someone who's going to help that location flourish. And it's, it's going to be somebody who's going to make sure, according to what we like as a city, and we're going to contribute, you know, continue to have discussions with the community, make sure that they're engaged in the process as we move forward, on what we anticipate, this beautiful land and this, you know, building that's been here forever. And Diane, how long has the building, I know it's in the, in the write-up, how long has the building been there?
Well, the original historic part of the structure, the Hideaway Club, was built somewhere around 1912, 1913.
Okay.
And then that was added on to many, many times. And in 1935, of course, Club Pheasant as we know it today was open, but it has grown and expanded through many additions and remodels over the years. So we had a tour yesterday. It was quite illuminating. And it is a huge restaurant, and it's, you know, there aren't many restaurant operators that will operate that large of a restaurant. But we have ideas, such as, it could be a restaurant incubator space. It could be, I mean, we just don't know. I mean, we're opening our minds, we're using our imagination. We'll be engaging with, you know, experience and knowledgeable, you know, restaurateurs, and, and looking at things like Oxbow Marketplace and Pike's Place. And, I mean, there are many, many examples of open air markets and things like that. And, and also, as you point out, the small business app, aspect of it, space in Southport is very expensive. And so that, that is an opportunity for us to explore what we might be able to do there.
Looking forward to that. And I miss the Mama Louisa's chicken, the raviolis.
They're selling ravioli through the, through the end, well, through the first week of December. So you can still get those.
Okay, good. And I also want to acknowledge past Councilmember Supervisor Mike McGowan, who's present here and has grown up with the Pheasant Club as well. So thank you so much, Mike, for being here tonight. So with that, we'll move on. Noah, the comment? Okay, we'll move on to item number nine. And I don't know, you did, okay, I want to go ahead and ask a question.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. I actually just wanted maybe a little bit of, of background, so just wanted the community to be able to hear, because I know that what we've been hearing for quite some time is the feeling of, of not having enough police and, and, and being understaffed, and how this is going to, to help get towards the goals for the police department. And so maybe just a little description on it, and then how it integrates into the long-term goal.
Absolutely. This project, the FUSIS Real-Time Crime in the Cloud Project, generated out of our current work group for Public Safety and Security Plan for the Entertainment District. And it's a platform that sets a foundation for our city's technology going forward in the future that brings existing city traffic cams, license plate readers, drones that are used for public safety in emergency situations, together into one platform to increase our efficiency in responding to emergencies, solving crimes after they happen, and, and protecting the special events that are common in our city. And so one of the things that, that we know that this platform will bring is it, it doesn't fill the role of officers, but it helps give our current officers tools to be more efficient and as a force multiplier for the existing resources. So as we go into the future, it's our vision to create a public safety technology ecosystem that, that spreads throughout the city, starting with the, the Riverfront Entertainment District, but allowing our officers to do more with the resources they have while we work through, you know, ultimately recruiting and bringing more officers to the city.
Thank you. So, so just on that, will this, it sounds like the system is starting in, in the Bridge District, and then will hopefully build out? Or this system, if we were to approve it, would be throughout the entire city?
This will go throughout the entire city and integrate with existing systems already, which include the traffic camera system, our dispatch system, the drones that we're using for, for responding to incidents. And so though the discussion generated out of the Entertainment District plan, this is going to lay the foundation citywide right now and help, you know, make us, take us leaps and bounds into the future for public safety technology.
I have two more questions. So then with that, I, I'm curious, how many other cities in the region are utilizing this? Or are we, I always like to be ahead of the game. So hopefully you're going to say that, but no pressure. And then the, the second question is, is the idea that this also could be a potential draw or incentivizer to hopefully bring in new recruits because we have this technology? And hopefully it'll make their jobs that much easier or more efficient?
Well, right now, the city of Grass Valley is the only other agency in Northern California that's using FUSIS. It's a much smaller city, obviously, than, than what we are working for. So we're looking to be one of the, the groundbreaking agencies in Northern California. There are other agencies in California. One is Rialto PD that's using it. Atlanta PD, Minneapolis have all gone with FUSIS to help do the same thing that, that we're doing here. I think as far as your question related to recruitment of officers, I think in the current technology era, where our new officers are very accustomed to using technology, that being a, a city that has state-of-the-art technology is, is and will attract new officers that, that see that we are progressive in that area and, and bring those resources to help them at their fingertips in the field.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Some real quick questions. You mentioned using drones, and you're going to start off in the Bridge area. Yet there are some areas in our city that have higher incidence of property and different types of crime. We got a lot of that in the north area, you know, everything from graffiti to, you know, larceny. So how soon is that going to be, I guess, pinpointed? You have the Bridge District. What about the north area?
Well, a good portion of the Entertainment District does encompass at least the, the Washington area along the riverfront. So the, the project we're working on within the work group goes from near the, the boat ramp down to the Pioneer Bridge.
I guess my concern was, we, we have, like I said, very high incidence, I think, in the north side. And I'm just wondering how soon that will be. I'm, I'm talking about, like, almost where, you know, the Broderick Bright area. How is that going to be?
If it's pertaining to FUSIS, the whole city, including the north area of the city, will go live with this once we implement it with the existing technologies that are, that are there. It'll have an immediate impact in that area.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Potemar Roscoe.
Thank you. So I am fully in support. This was one of the items, not specifically FUSIS, but the type of technology that we want to bring to the region. Many other agencies are employing the use of unmanned aerial vehicles and, you know, and drones and other technology in order to better protect the public, but also better protect the officers that serve the public. And as the wife of a 25-year West, or Sacramento police officer, and someone who understands that, you know, officer safety is not only in the department and on the streets, but also right in my home, I am absolutely and fully in support of bringing our department up to speed with these types of efforts to not only lessen the, the, the burden on our officers to be everywhere at one time, but also to help us really move into the next generation of public safety. So Lieutenant Winger, thank you. I am addressing you correctly? Thank you, sir. Thank you so much for the presentation. And I think that this is a fantastic move forward.
So, so if we, if we were to approve this, I'm, I'm in support as well, when, when would it actually go online?
So it's approximately a two to three month transition process to, to bring it live within the city. And that would be following any of the budget, budget and purchase acquisition stuff that has to take place. So depending on, on the, the process, I would say within the next four to six months would be a time, a, a good timeline.
And I'm sorry, this really actually is my last question. So we have, at least in, in District Three, we have issues with sideshows, really bad issues with sideshows. And would something like this be able to at least curb it, address it, more quickly address those issues?
Absolutely. One of the, the key things we're looking at on sideshows, this will help us use all of our technology resources to help monitor sideshows as they're developing and effectively deploy officers to, to respond to them. A lot of that has to do with the officers being able to view technology stuff in their cars at their fingertips while they're out in the field, whereas they don't have somebody at a, a real-time crime center. And that's the, the critical feature of this, is that this system doesn't require a technology specialist to monitor this stuff. It allows the officers in the field to be able to do it right from their cars.
They are the specialists, basically.
Yes, they.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Winger. I just want to add a little bit from my experience in ride-along, great ride-along, by the way. But I did observe firsthand some of the gaps in, you know, being able to assess what happened. There was a home invasion for an elderly gentleman. And, you know, the perpetrators were along West Capitol Avenue. And I recall that there was some gaps in being able to track that individual down, but there was some ability to track that. And I, I appreciate the training, expertise, and the due diligence of, of our police officers. And I'm really confident that, you know, shifting into this new technology is going to move quickly and well, you know, once we, you know, it's up and running. I feel like our police officers are really, you know, needing this technology. I, I feel like our police officers are really, you know, needing this technology, given, given the shortage we have of the police officers today. In being able to have the resources that they can track somebody down and being able to, with the, you know, license plate reader, things like that, it's a long time coming, so I'm really, you know, supportive of this. Also, you know, I recall another incident where a 16-year-old girl was killed, and we had to rely on, you know, video cameras from gas stations and other resources. And I, I just felt like we were behind, especially in an incident where the whole community was really scared over trying to figure out who this individual was. But, you know, with the limited technology, once again, our police officers tracked that individual down and was able to arrest them quickly and take that, take, take the murderer off the street. So, I, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to, you know, track the criminals down a lot faster. And would like to also see it citywide in, in any way, because as you heard, from the North to the South, there's stuff going on everywhere. And, and I, I feel we're stretched pretty thin among, among our manpower. And looking forward to seeing, you know, this be put to use quickly. Any way to expedite it, to get it out, really would appreciate that. So, thank you for all the work that you've, have put behind this. So, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to, are we all set for someone else?
Yes, we can make an motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to move consent agenda.
Sorry, we, we do have public comment on item number nine.
Oh, we have public comment on item number nine, yes. Okay, thank you. And we will open it up for public comment on item number nine.
Alfred Melbourne.
So, my thought process is 71,000 can easily become 171,000, 200,000. Sure, you want to have all the newest gadgets and technology to keep everyone safe, and definitely all for that. We have helicopters, drones, bikes. What do we have? Horses, trucks. I'm sure we probably got some submarines or some type of submersibles in there somewhere. My whole concern is that why do we need so much to care and look after our people? Why did, why do we need all this? I think that we need to start investing in some of the programs that will assist folks ahead of time so that we don't have to be dealing with, you guys are claiming it's such a huge crime problem. Personally, I haven't seen it. I've attended some of these meetings here recently that paid for surveys and whatnot, and I can't get no real answers when it comes to what are the crime stats? Where are they compared to last year and the year before, and five years prior to that, since we have the technology to keep track of these things, right? Secondly, so we're talking about a shortage of police. Is there really a shortage of police? How do we quantify this number? Because I live in this community, and I drive around here every day. I go all over the place, right? And every time I see somebody pulled over, I see two, three cop cars there, up to four or five officers sometimes. And, and I know from experience, because I know these people when I see them, it might just be somebody unstable, disturbed, and you have a cop car sitting out in the middle of the street, impeding traffic. And so, I don't understand. You mean, is there really a shortage? What is really going on here? How can we not figure out this issue? What are the crime stats? What are the, really the numbers that are out there right now? Are they really increasing so exponentially that we have to sound this alarm and get all these new technologies? I think we need to invest into the people in our community and support the people, that we don't need to be so heavily policed with all these different entities surrounding us. Sure, I, I want to keep our community safe. I love our kids, our elders, women and children, just as much as all of you do. But I just don't think we need to keep on investing over and over. And every time the police say, yes, they need something, everybody's ready to just drop everything on them. No, again, invest in the community, invest in the people where you don't have to police them so heavily. Thank you.
Timothy Allen.
So, when I was looking for a room for rent, I came across this map. It's the crimegrade.org map. And I don't know how, my phone's not big, but in this map, you see Southport area. It's all green. And then you see in the north, you'll see all this red and yellow. All that is F, F, failure. You failed. That's what that is. And you can find this on crimegrade.org. Now, I want to reiterate some of the things that this gentleman here said as well, is we do need to invest in the people. We need to see what the root causes are. Why are people going into Walgreens and stealing food? Why am I lowering my grocery bill? City Council. Why is inflation so high? There are things that you could do to prevent things. Targeting the root causes, the brute problems of why these individuals choose to do what they do. Now, I believe in the police. I've always believed in the police. But when I go on TikTok and I see all these videos of police officers abusing their power, playing dictator, playing god, with their little BB guns. People have guns too. They're not the only ones. There's a reason why the forefathers put the Second Amendment in. Because if the First Amendment doesn't work, there's always a second one. But we need to, these people, they're good people. Police are good people. But at the end of the day, we got to figure out why criminals are criminals. And not all of them are criminals. In, in their heart, they want to eat. In their heart, they want to provide for their families. They want to keep a roof over their head. And I can see that. But at the same time, you shouldn't be needing to steal. You should be able to have a regular paying job like me, like all these other folks behind me. But I want to reiterate myself, crimegrade.org. And when I was looking through Facebook Marketplace for a rental, I came across this map. I definitely suggest you guys give this a little bit of a look. But the police need the support, but the people need the support too. And while those little drones are flying by, don't forget the real people who need help. All right. Thank you, and God bless.
We have no additional comments on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council. Any other comments among the councilmembers this time? All right, and Madam Clerk, councilmember, I'll call a move. Mayor Protem Orozco seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, this item is approved. Next is our public hearing. We have Agenda Item 11 under Community Development. It's a public hearing in consideration of first reading of Ordinance 22-21 regarding proposed amendments to Title 17 zoning of the municipal code. Mr. Daniel Baruman, our senior planner, planner from the Community Development Department. You can provide us with a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Daniel Baruman, senior planner for the city of West Sacramento. I've been with the city since June of this year, and I'm excited to present this item for your consideration this evening. Title 17, or the zoning section of the municipal code, requires periodic updates to keep up with ongoing changes in the city, the region, and the state. There are existing regulations that are either no longer applicable, that require updating due to changes in state law, or that require process improvements. On October 20th, 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this item and approved Resolution 22-3 PC, and recommended the city council adopt an ordinance to amend sections of Title 17 of the municipal code. The purpose of the, for this action tonight is threefold. Staff wants to clarify any ambiguous language in the code set so that it allows planners to work effectively to carry out the mission of the general plan. Number two, remain consistent with state law. This is seen primarily with three housing element programs that we've identified to be updated within the code. And number three, treat the zoning code as a living document. The code sets up parameters to work within, and it's our guide as planners, but we should strive to improve it where we can, and that means hearing from the city staff and the community to better serve residents of West Sacramento. There are a total of seven proposed amendments that staff is taking forward this evening. Number one is applicability, applicability to property. And the intent of this change is to allow the city a little bit more discretion in land use holdings it owns and operates. Number two is fueling stations. This proposed change would require fueling stations to apply and receive a minor use permit as opposed to being permitted by right in commercial zones. Number three is a section on paving, residential paving. The desire is to clarify the language of residential paving for clearer interpretation for staff and for the public. Number four is section on, the section on swimming pools and spas. This change would allow pools and spas on side yards if the required space, space and setbacks are met. Number five, and these, the last few are actually housing element programs that we're implementing, then the housing element that was approved just last year. So, number five would be actually Section 6.4, emergency shelters. And in terms of requirements on parking, this would amend the section to require one parking space for every 10 adults, adult beds. This is a, this is a change from one space for every five adult beds. Number six, this would be actually Housing Program 6.6 in terms of special housing needs. So, we're remending the definition of family to be more inclusive and consistent with the Department of Housing Community Development's direction. And lastly, Housing Program 6.8, farmworker housing, allow farmworker housing by right in the AG or agricultural zoning district. For full transparency, earlier tonight, I submitted a council memo noting a slight change in the recommendation to indicate that this is the first reading of the ordinance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take on any questions on behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to council for any questions or comments, and not open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. I'll either accept a motion, or we can have a discussion.
I'll move the recommended action.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ledesma moved, and Councilmember Akala seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Baruman. Appreciate all the work on this.
Thank you.
Item is approved. Next is Agenda Item 12 under the city manager's office. It's consideration of Resolution 22-140, renaming the Tower Bridge Gateway to the Christopher Cabaldin Parkway. And we have Mr. Doug Dros here to present on this item.
Evening, mayor and council. Doug Dros, Government Affairs Manager. This item was prepared in response to council direction at its October 19th meeting, which was to propose recognizing Mayor, former Mayor Christopher Cabaldin for his years of service to the city. To that end, staff is recommending the city change the name of Tower Bridge Gateway to the Christopher Cabaldin Parkway. Tower Bridge Gateway is an approximately two stretch, two-mile stretch of the former State Route 275, connecting Tower Bridge to Highway 50. To be clear, the proposed renaming would not affect the bridge itself, which is owned by the state of California. There are four city streets that intersect the Tower Bridge, Tower Bridge Gateway, I should say, Third, Fifth, Seventh, and Grand Streets. This proposal would have minimal impact on existing property owners. In fact, there's currently only one physical structure with an address on Tower Bridge Gateway. That's the West Gateway Place Apartments. There's 10 other potential addresses or vacant properties along the street. Just a quick note on the city's street renaming policy. Provides two options for initiating a street renaming process. The first of which is that the majority of property owners on a street may request city consideration. The second option is for the city council to initiate the process on its own initiative, as it has done in this case. Ultimately, it is the council's choice whether to approve a name change under either of these scenarios. The city's policy also requires that the Community Development Department consult with affected utilities, government agencies, and city departments, as well as providing a 10-day advance notice to all property owners and residents on the subject street. Community development staff has conducted that required consultation and outreach, and received no objections or concern from affected utilities, government agencies, property owners, or residents along Tower Bridge Gateway. As noted in the staff report, staff believes this is an appropriate way to recognize Mr. Cabaldin, who was the city's first directly elected mayor, and served for a combined 22 years as councilmember and mayor. I will close my remarks there, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember Akala?
I do have some, some comments and, and questions that were sent to me by members of the public. I'm, I'm hoping you can shed some light on this.
Do my best.
I agree. We were all in favor of a resolution to honor Mayor Cabaldin for his many contributions to West Sacramento. 20 years is a long time. And I'm, always respectful of our staff who does a lot of work. But I really feel honestly that naming such a large intersection should be something that all the public has input in. And, you know, I, I know we do a land acknowledgement every time we open a meeting. And Mr. Melbourne has many times said, you know, sort of empty words unless we see some action. Someone out there mentioned that maybe, you know, we should think of an alternative to this recommendation, maybe name it after one of the indigenous native tribes here, you know, of West Sacramento. So, you've sort of explained a bit of the, of the process. So, how many signs are we looking at? Is it a sign that we're looking at in this proposal?
Yeah, so the, the street signage would, would be replaced with new street signage should the council take the recommended action. I believe there would only be four signs at those four intersect, oh, I mean, not four signs. There would be signs at four different intersections.
Okay. And how much does each sign cost?
I, I wouldn't be able to provide an answer to that at the moment. That would be for capital projects or public works, I imagine.
Some of the signs we produce in-house, I'm not sure about these exact signs. But the, just to put it in context, these are the signs that, I think, three of the four are the type to hang off of the streetlights. It'd be just like the signs that are out there now. They would just have new hype on them. And then I believe there's one sign that is the classic, attached to a pole on Seventh Street at that intersection. So, I think there's a total of four. There might be a couple more, but it, it's a fairly nominal cost to replace that.
Okay, I have, I had a few questions. You sort of answered most of them with your presentations. I'll just keep going down. So, you said you notified all the neighbors on the subject streets already, and you received a positive response?
So, on the, on the subject street, so just to be clear, that only properties with the physical address, Tower Bridge Gateway, were notified in addition to the required utilities and other government agencies. We didn't receive any, any feedback on, on the renaming in the time requested. We made it clear that, you know, we had got them out more than 10 days in advance, and that we would need any feedback from those affected parties within that 10-day window, and didn't receive them.
You know, a few months ago, we had a new development that was naming streets, and I sort of mentioned that we probably should have named it after folks, you know, Black Dell Martinez, you know, who was one of our first Latino leaders in the area. And we have many other folks that our community could probably tell you about that have made very good contributions. May I ask who, who recommended Mayor Cabaldin's name for this?
I, I will take this question because I didn't get a chance to. I was the one who submitted the request through the mayor to the city manager.
That's great. I'm just going down my questions that were asked, so I want full transparency here. Let's see. So, if someone in the neighborhood wanted a street name change, and they got everyone on the street to agree to that, could that be done according to the policies and procedures we have? Let's say we have a street named, well, as a matter of fact, someone, Ms. Popfrot has mentioned a street named Squaw, which is such a derogatory term that it's named Squaw Drive or something like that here in West Sacramento.
Yeah, so, well, I guess I'll address that, that end part first. I, I believe the city is in the process of renaming that, that street in question.
Right, I'll jump in after you. Go ahead.
But just moving on in terms of the process, yeah, I mean, the, the city has a, a policy on this, and its request for consideration of a name change may be initiated by a majority of the fee title owners fronting on the street. So, you know, I think that would go through city staff, perhaps Planning Commission, but any, any group of residents, a majority of, of those title owners on a given street may request a name change.
Yeah, and just to give an update on that, so the Squaw, there actually are two streets, technically Squaw Court, Squaw Road out in Bridgeway Lakes. It was brought to us, I can't remember exactly how it It was brought to us, I can't remember exactly how it was brought up, but staff on that one initiated the process through the neighborhood, actually did direct outreach, very direct outreach to the, to the residents of that street.
Knocking doors.
We, we reached, I don't know exactly how it happened, but we, we reached out to every single property owner. We've received, like the policy says, a majority response that they are in favor of renaming it, so now we're going through the process for that street. That one's a little more complicated just because of the number of addresses and you have physical structures or single-family homes, so it's a little bit, little bit longer to get it done, but that is in the works, absolutely, and I believe at some point the council will have to take action on that. But like Doug said, there's two possible scenarios of renaming a street. I also want to address some of the questions I received about street naming in the first place. We do have a street naming policy. Most of the policy pertains to new streets when developers are naming streets for the first time. The, the final section of that policy is what pertains to renaming streets. There are two options there that Doug set, and I'll reiterate. The first one is what we describe where a majority of the owners on the street petition the city to, hey, we, we all agree we want to rename the street, and that's, that's one path. The other is when it's council initiated, and as you recall, a couple weeks ago, Councilmember Ledesma made the request for a renaming. I made it clear that it was, it would be a street renaming, and so this is the result of that process. It being council initiated, so.
So if you want.
And I'll, and I'll also say, in terms of the origination of ideas, we were asked on staff to help come up with potential ideas. I will say that Tower Bridge Gateway was a suggestion I made for the significance of the mayor's legacy and the intent of the council behind the renaming process, and I know Councilmember Ledesma will chime in on that as well.
Okay, I have another question. So how often can you rename a street?
Fantastic question. The policy, which I believe was, was sent to the council today, is, I would, I would describe it as bare bones. It's not a technical term, but it does not contemplate multiple renaming, so that may be something that city staff wishes to take another look at.
Okay, well, I, I think you've, you've answered a lot of the questions. Is this a first reading? My understanding is we have had first reading before.
No, this is not an ordinance. This is a, a single, single vote action. So the policy says, once the council adopts, in this case, I think we're doing it by resolution.
Yes.
Then the street renaming would take effect, and then we have to produce the signs. And in this case, we would plan to have some sort of ceremony to unveil the new roadway name at a later date. It would be sometime in 2023.
Right. I still believe that, you know, public input is really important on something so major because it is a large intersection there. And regardless of who it was named after, I think it's really important. I mean, we've had members of the public who are very interested in what's going on when the Sanchez home, for example, was up. You know, we had a lot of folks come out and, because they knew about it. They found out, you know, through the newspaper, and of course, Mr. Sanchez and his family making a lot of very diligent outreach, you know, efforts, and the public knew about this. And I have to tell you, I really didn't, I asked last time how, how streets were renamed, I mean, named, you know, when the developer came in, and I think a lot of members of the public just, they, they're not aware of the process. That's one of the reasons I asked for this explanation. And I've heard from many members of the, of the public, especially from my side of, of the area, and I would have liked to have had more input from more West Sacramentoans. So my, my objection is, is the process that I believe was not as clear to many people on the naming of, of this causeway, I mean, not causeway, this intersection, the streets, the four that you mentioned. And I did propose an alternative, so just to let you know, my, my vote on this will be a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Akala. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And I'll just make a brief comment and then another public comment and probably come back.
And then come back, okay.
Thank you. I'll make a, just a quick, quick.
Good, go ahead.
Comment. Thank you. First of all, thank you, Doug, and thank you to the city staff. Appreciate you bringing this back, and I appreciate city manager and the mayor who, and the council for allowing this to come to the agenda for today. Obviously, in, in thinking through this process, and thinking through more so the, the need for this recognition, I'm ending 12 years of service, and I cannot even contemplate 24 years of service. And when, Madam Mayor, you won this election years ago, almost today, wherever, you, you succeeded in the election, and Mr. Cabaldin, his 24 years of public service ended, we were in the middle of a pandemic, we were in the middle of a few things in the city, but it was having a public square where we can thank somebody for 24 years of service was important. We didn't get a chance to really do that. We had a Zoom call, and, and Councilmember Akala and you were both sworn in that day, and as was Councilmember Roscoe, and it was a Zoom call, and so it was, it was, that was the circumstance two years ago, and we're moving on. We moved on to two years of governing in COVID, and I think for me personally, I know the mayor and I discussed it, I've talked to community members about what will we do for Mayor Cabaldin, what did we, what did we ever do for Mayor Cabaldin? He served the community. We agreed with him or disagreed with him. He served our public. He led from the chair longer than anybody, and it's not an easy chair to be in. And, but he, he served, and he served in a way and in a, and with a vision that the city will be thankful for for years to come. It was, it was serving with him for 12 years, and I think he would be the first one to say he didn't do it alone. And he had the help of, of bright, talented staff, he had the help of community members, he had the help of his, of other council members. But he led for 24 years, and for that, this, I felt this was important to acknowledge the achievements, his service, many years of service to our city, and, and having a, Tower Bridge Gateway renamed in his honor, with his name on it, I think is apropos. I think many others will have things to say about his achievements, and we have to come back later to it, but I appreciate the council accepting my request with this agenda item and hearing this out, and look forward to voting yes.
Any other requests to speak at this time?
I'll wait until after we hear from our speaker.
I just have a couple of questions. I, I too have been receiving feedback that this process of, like a, this is a resolution, correct?
That's correct.
And that's the process to rename a street?
Yeah, that, that would be the way that the council effectuates the, the street renaming.
And it's not in conflict with any state law or any federal law?
I'll defer to council, but.
No.
Not to my knowledge.
No. It's, it's at the discretion of the city?
That's correct.
A resolution could be comparable to what we pass even when we recognize either an individual or, that's, that's, that's a comparable, what we do is we put it on the agenda, and then it comes up for a full vote by the council when we want to make it a council resolution, correct?
Yes.
And, and I do have, like, mayor's proclamations as well that I could do separate and apart from any council approval.
That's correct.
Haven't had any conflicts with that yet. Nobody complained, nobody's throwing tomatoes when I distribute those. I, I just want to get that, get that clarification because I've received a lot of, you know, complaints that this process is not open or fair. And I, and I know that in the end of October, when, when we brought this up, that this was going to be coming up for this meeting, that, that the city manager said it was going to be a street renaming in addition to, and, and I, and I was going back and forth a little bit on a vote, which was unanimously approved, and I just want to go back to the city manager. That's, that was the process, correct?
Yes, this is brought up as a future item, a future agenda item request, and I did make that statement that the intent was to do a renaming of a street. We didn't at that time identify the particular street, but per the policy for a future item request. I think we actually waited a couple, it was, it was on, I think, October 19th, that occurred.
Right.
And to give the staff time to bring it back, we brought back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm only asking these, because I'm familiar with the process. I'm only asking these questions for the sake of the public who has been asking for some clarification on our process and making sure they understand how, how this works. I don't expect anybody to sit through our codes and ordinances and everything to try to understand, but it's also useful to provide some clarification for the public.
And Mayor, if I could, the, the street renaming policy does contemplate a resolution that being sent to affected owners. I think that's partly why we're adopting by resolution tonight.
I see. Is there a number of the affected people?
Yeah, so, well, I couldn't tell you exactly how many units are in the West, West Gateway Place Apartment. If I had the mailing list in front of me, I.
Seventy-eight.
Okay, yeah, he knows that.
I worked on that.
Ready to jump up here. Thank you.
So those are, in, in addition to the owner of the building, those are the only current people living with an address on the Tower Bridge Gateway.
And, and. And all 78 were notified?
By mail, yeah.
And not a single one came back? Sorry, what? I said, and not a single, no one came back from the 78 folks?
In terms of providing commentary about, no, not, not that we received.
The residents that live there, have you explored what their language, their primary language is?
That was not a part of this particular outreach program. It was, it was a direct, direct mail.
Direct mail, okay. West Gateway Place, I think we've toured, we're not toured, but we've done engagement during, it's a national night out, and, and it's a big Afghan community, correct? And I, I do notice that there are some language barriers when we engage with them. Was there any interest to interpret the letter in the Afghan language? I don't know what that, would that be?
Mayor, we, we have a very good relationship, working relationship with the developer and owner of that project, and they are actually about to start a second phase of it. Part of the implementation process of, of doing this, we could, we could definitely do direct outreach to the management and help assist with, you know, understanding the implementation of it.
Right.
And they have onsite staff that do tenant services, so we can make sure that we reach out to them as part of this.
That'd be great. Can make sure that they're, they're informed. I will say that, and I did know that there was probably a, maybe a language and a cultural barrier, and I did reach out to the Muslim community and shared with them that this was our plan. And to, to do the due diligence and the outreach to connect with the residents there, that they had a relationship, a working relationship, and I just want to convey to the public that I did make that connection as well. So, so that we added another layer of engagement with the residents there who are, who are connected with our, our, our local mosque. Thank you. And I will now open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mary Ann Estes. I'm here tonight on behalf of Yolo County Supervisor Oscar Villegas. Regrettably, he is unable to personally attend tonight's meeting as he is currently in Southern California attending the State Association of Counties Conference representing Yolo County. He has asked that I read his public comment for the record. This is him. With over 50,000 residents in West Sacramento, I am confident that I speak for many when I acknowledge the depth and breadth of Christopher Cabaldin's leadership. During his 24 years on city council and while serving 18 years as mayor, he has elevated the city to the next level by inspiring respect and recognition from the surrounding regions. The impacts of his leadership throughout the city and specifically our waterfront will be enjoyed by generations to come. I recall spending many evenings on the dais, discussing the riverfront and all the potential that it held, and today we are realizing that potential. This is not only one example of the fruits of his vision, there are many other tangible initiatives he has created for our city which rival the other communities. I believe that renaming Tower Bridge Gateway to Christopher L. Cabaldin Gateway symbolizes an appropriate token of our collective appreciation of his years of commitment to our waterfront and celebrates his legacy in the history of West Sacramento. I urge your unanimous support of this resolution. Thank you, Supervisor Villegas. With the remaining time, I'd like to also offer my public comment. Mary Ann Estes, resident of the North Area, Brighton-Broderick for over 50 years, and I completely agree with renaming the Gateway Park Place to Christopher Cabaldin. Anything we have nice in West Sacramento is due to his vision and his leadership and his ability to bring in funding, state level and local funding to create and just make our, our community a robust community that it is, and I think he's well deserving of this accolade. Thank you very much.
Mike McGowan.
Have to say, after sitting here for a little while this late, I think I'm just, just as glad I can go home. But I'm here to support the action as, along with Supervisor Oscar Villegas. But a little bit of history, I think, may be helpful. You know, West Sacramento today, as a result, just to no small degree of the work you, you all have done, but certainly others, other council people have done from the beginning, enjoys a tremendous reputation in the region and throughout the state. I probably could say safely that I'm probably the oldest geezer in the room, and I've lived here my whole life, and that reputation was not always as good as it is today. There are actually folks that said you shouldn't go over there, it's a tough place, and it was. There were tough parts to it. It was also a fantastic place to grow up, the neighborhoods were, were incredibly great, but there were parts of it that still had some reputation. And I can remember as a young adult or an older teenager and a young adult going to a function over in Sacramento and having somebody talk down about West Sacramento, oh my God, you're from West Sacramento, yeah, yeah, yeah. I had to hear that, had to put up with that. I'm proud to say I was part of the team of the very first council that started to turn that around, but I also have to honestly say that we didn't see the fruits of our labor as far as our reputation was concerned right away. It was really under Christopher's leadership as mayor and during his tenure as mayor, and all the work of he and his fellow council members and staff during all of those years that he was here, that we really started to see the significant changes in the development of West Sacramento and our reputation. And I went from sort of like not wanting to tell people I was from West Sac, for fear I might get in a fistfight with somebody because I had to protect my home turf, because I am a West Sac boy, to being very proud of the fact that people would look at me and say, you're from West Sacramento? Yeah. God, you guys are really kicking it over there. You're doing a great job. That mayor of yours, he's fantastic. Hey, could he come be our mayor? And I go, no, 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 don't say that too loud, he might want to move over here and be your mayor. So I want to give the dude a lot of credit. I had issues with him as a supervisor when he was on the, on the city council and mayor, and we worked through those to have a successful working relationship. So he wasn't perfect, and I didn't always agree with him, but he always gave it 100%. He gave us his heart, and he was the quarterback that led us to the place that we're at today, where that West Sacramento emblem up there is, is one of pride, and it represents a community that's got their shit together and is moving forward and making great progress. So as the quarterback, he deserves a lot of credit. I hope you grant this, this resolution. Thank you.
Alfred Melbourne.
Kind of taken by surprise, almost, but not really. It just kind of leads me to see once again how out of touch some of our folks are. It hasn't been so long for me to not be able to remember Christopher Cabaldin and the things that he's done or the things that he didn't do for our side of town, because it is in fact, our area didn't just become a food desert overnight. We just didn't start having all these problems overnight. We understand that there had to have been someone behind the wheel for these past 24 years and not getting the things done that we. years and not getting the things done that we need done in our side of town. So, um, I have some personal history with Christopher Cabaldin, and, um, it hasn't always been the best. You know, he could have done a lot more when it came to, um, bringing the resources, tools, amenities out to Broderick and Bright, but as you guys know, we have a long laundry list of issues and concerns in our side of town of which were recently pointed out by a judge. He pointed out that our area is so disenfranchised, has so many barriers and issues that we need special protections, and that's not no badge of honor. Believe me, it's not. We want to continue to uplift our community to be proud, right? So, we have to come here time and again and raise our voice so that we're heard when, of course, this Tower Bridge Gateway that's so close to us in our community, born and raised right here, right? Be renamed after, uh, to be named after someone that, um, is still alive even and just not in agreement with the whole process of engaging the community and getting our input once again. So, it seems to me that we have five, maybe six people here making a decision that's going to affect a whole segment of a community that's not, um, being represented properly. I think we have five or six people here that will disagree with you all. So, what do we do? You guys say what happens, right? And this is what happens. Every time we come in here, we spew a few words out and we state our, um, either agreement or disagreement, right? And you guys do what you do, right? It is what it is, right? And the whole street gets named after somebody, and we're in disagreement with it. Um, I mentioned several times that talk is cheap, words are cheap. We need to start acknowledging the First Nations people here, acknowledging the history of our people on this land, recognizing all of our sacred spaces and protecting them in perpetuity, giving our people, our youngsters, something to look up to. So, I'm in disagreement with this, and I hate to see that, um, this is probably likely can be what happens here, and I do not believe that he deserves the honor, not whatsoever. Where is he at now? You know? I'm in disagreement with you guys.
Rhonda Pope Flores?
My goodness. Okay, now I know how to do this. Don't count, don't start my count yet. Okay, I'm going to go back a little bit. I'm a hell of a researcher. I went back to the October 19th, uh, council meeting, and what I find, what I have a problem with is you waited until the last three minutes of that city council meeting to take a vote on an item that is described as a future agenda item. That led people to believe that there was no reason to be here for public comment. Then you turned around and you made a vote on it. And what's worse, you violated the Brown Act. You did not take public comment. You did not seek public comment. And then I went back and I double-checked to see if there were people in the room still, and there were. There was no public comment. This is what we've been complaining about forever. This is why Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association is here now. I want to tell you, that was not acceptable. We're not going to let you keep doing this. You violated the Brown Act. Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association will be filing a complaint on this very issue. Now, I'll talk about your policy. So, your policy has a great loophole that your city manager described. It has all these regulations that you have to abide by, you know, theming and person shouldn't be alive and, and shouldn't be more than 14 characters. Alive, more than 14 characters, no public comment. You violated everyone's rights to have a say of whether there should have been a bridge named after him. Back up a little bit. In that city council meeting, it wasn't even clear what was going to be to honor him until the city manager recommended that a street be named after him, and that's not your job. That's your job. That's our job. That is not appropriate. I am so disgusted that this is going forward right now. So, what I recommend is you go back to the policy. You read it, you enforce it. Stop looking for loopholes to get away from it. If you have guidelines that you expect everyone else, developers, why should city council have a loophole to do whatever they want? That's not appropriate. Follow your policies. My final. No. Sorry, I'm so mad. Oh, let's talk about consultation. I've got 22 seconds. You are supposed to notify agencies, governments, tribal governments. I'm going to tell you something. I have a real big stickler for not having proper consultation with tribes, being a tribal leader. It happens to us all the time. It's inappropriate, it's disrespectful, and it should not be allowed. So, I'm going to recommend to you to not take action on this today and do your job the right way. Take this back far public comment the way you were supposed to do it in October and do it right, because if you vote on this today, you're wrong.
No clapping, please. Maria Garcia? She's left. Timothy Allen?
This makes me laugh. Like, this is hysterical. The hypocrisy that's going on in this board, it's insane. You guys are doing so many great things after this election. I hope people are noticing and watching, so that way, when the next election comes, they know not to vote for the people you endorse or the incumbent. I have 9,163 reasons why to not name this bridge, and that's 9,163. That's about the same number that voted for the mayor when Cabaldin went up for reelection, right? 9,163 reasons to not name this bridge. Yeah, here you are, naming this bridge. Woo! This guy is not an icon. He's not a god. He served for 22 years. Boo hoo. Boo hoo. He served for 22 years. You served for 12 years. What have you done for my community? Nada. What she said. I've lived here since I was seven years old. The same potholes are still there, guy. Those aren't getting patched, but now that I'm here, they're getting patched, right? I, I notice the small little details. There's a reason why I served in the United States Army as a United States Army infantryman. It's not to chase titles or to look down on your people, my people, that I wanted to serve. But the Constitution, the liberties that the people that aren't here witnessing, take for granted, people need to start paying attention because things like this start happening, where their local politicians affect them directly, directly affecting them in actions like this. That man has done nothing for me, nothing for my family, nothing for them, nothing for them. It's very disappointing to see this. And I got another 40 seconds, but this is a real slap on the face to the current mayor who had over 9,000 people vote for her. Probably going to be over 10,000, honestly. There's another update here on the 18th. But it's still slap on the face and a real big middle finger to not only, another thing that I wanted to say is, you guys change rules when you want to, or you find loopholes when you want to. Thing called hypocrites, and that's what you are, and I'm very ashamed of all of you.
Russ Leipig or Leipig?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Guerrero and council members. Um, I just, I want to start off by saying how proud I am to live here in West Sacramento and how proud I am to live on the north side of town. This community has changed greatly over the past 25-plus years. Former council member Mike McGowan mentioned, you know, it, it used to be a rough place in times. Uh, the north side of town wasn't that spectacular. Uh, I now love going downtown or down to the little area with all the, the shops where Midway is, where Burgers and Brew is, Broderick's. It's, it's one of my favorite parts of town. That, that recently turned over and, and happened. Uh, there's a lot of magic that's happened in this city, um, largely due to the leadership of Christopher Cabaldin. I think it's important that we recognize the service of Christopher. Uh, Mayor Cabaldin led the city for 24 years, and his leadership shaped major changes within our city. Be it a road, a bridge, a bike pathway, um, he deserves some recognition. Thank you.
Maria Gralva?
Madam Mayor, uh, council members and, and staff. It's 9:00 PM, and I came here to make a public comment regarding this issue at 7:00. My time is valuable, and I really feel disrespected by our city manager and actually our city attorney more specifically. Let me tell you about my time. At 4:00 in the morning, I had a fifth grader come to my house because mom had to be at work at 5:00 AM, so she brings her, uh, 12-year-old to my house at 4:00 AM. I get him to school, and then I went and I put in eight hours of work. At 5:30, I went to the hospital until, um, 6:40, uh, because my friend had an aneurysm. So, I went there and then hauled ass over here. I'm going to use that word because he said shit. So, if he can say shit, I can also say other words. And so, and then came over here to do public comment, and then I was going to go home, okay? I was going to go home. Government Code Section 54954.3A says that the, under the Brown Act, the public has the right to speak on any item on the agenda before or during the body's discussion of the item in regular or special meetings and to address the legislative body on any item of interest to, to the public during a regular meeting. And also, actually, that, that screen is gone. I was going to actually quote another, uh, law, uh, firm that defends, uh, First Amendment, uh, First Amendment Rights Coalition or something, something to that effect, uh, where it states that maybe in specific terms, I may not speak, uh, during public comment regarding, uh, the specific, uh, name of the bridge or whatever, but I can speak in broader terms. But the more important question here, is he going to be interrupting the public? Is he the mayor that decides who to prohibit from speaking? That's really the issue here. That's really the issue here. And, and that's, and, and I, I am so sick and tired of the disrespect he had towards Scott Rafferty when we had our settlement conferences. He was so disrespectful, very disrespectful. And so, I'm just questioning, if you're going to allow a city attorney to run your meetings, because I believe you're supposed to be presiding over this. And then as far as naming the, the bridge over someone that was not a real leader, he was a real estate developer. He did nothing for the community. Why don't we just say, you guys, and I respect you and, 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 and Norma Alcala and, um, because I don't believe you three are here to serve the public, why don't you just say, we're here to serve developers? Why don't you say that out loud, okay? You're not here to serve the public, okay? Just say that out loud. Don't fake it. You don't have to fake it, okay? Just say that you're here to serve developers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Mickey Fa- Faucet?
This has been a long time since I've been up here. My name's Mickey Faucet, lifelong resident of the north side and, and the rest of West Sac, all over, uh, uh, mayor, city council members. Uh, I, I looked at this number, I'm number 12, and I see the, I, they, renaming the Tower Bridge Gateway. Tower Bridge Gateway is cool. I like it. We've got the Tower Bridge there. We've got the gateway going to the Tower Bridge. My friends are coming in from San Francisco, San Diego, you name who and where, and they got their little maps, they're eight by tens, and they're looking and they're going, Tower Bridge, Tower Bridge, Tower Bridge. Who's this? Cabaldin? What's the Cabaldin thing here? Where did I come into it? Leave it to the Tower Bridge Gateway historically. Call it Ann Rudin's Golden Bridge, you know? Gateway, but the Tower Bridge Gateway, I like it. That's my opinion. Thank you. Well, and just for the record, I'm the oldest geezer in here.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bringing it back to council, closing the public comment now, and I, um, would like to ask if there are any other comments among the council members. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, and thank you to the, uh, for the comments and, uh, the folks staying up past nine, especially two of the old folks out there. But thanks for, uh, being out here tonight. As I said, um, this originated from, um, for me at least, um, from conversations in whether Zoom calls or otherwise during the pandemic of honoring somebody, um, and recognizing somebody who showed tremendous leadership through, uh, two decade or over two decades of public service. Uh, that's what this is about. And in public service, um, you're not always going to agree, uh, setting up in the dais with somebody. You're not. And if you're, if you are, you're probably not doing a great job as, as an elected official. Everyone's going to disagree with you. And, um, but more so, this is about just honoring somebody who gave a good portion of their life, um, to being and serving the community in their way. So, and, and, and more so, I said, there's, these were consequential years he led, as former Mayor McGowan articulated. Uh, when I came here and I started in public service, I understood clearly the vision of the city. Um, I grew up in the Sacramento area, the South Sacramento area, and, and came here with, as my wife grew up here. And, um, everyone's prideful of West Sac, and it didn't have a great reputation. But the trajectory we put ourselves on, that the mayor led in a lot of ways, and we can, I can tie many things that he led on, from his support and his work in, at Secog, which, uh, the mayor and I now have been, well, I won't anymore, have been serving on. We see his influence there, and that has, that, the work and his influence at Secog, uh, in promoting West Sacramento and showing what we could be in the urban area has led to the, the revitalization of our riverfront, including the Washington-Broderick neighborhoods through Washington Sustainable Grant. It's totally allowed, uh, that community to be, have the infrastructure in place to move forward. He has created a, a program. When I came on council, we didn't get much involved in social program, but we did in the last decade in creating the home run. We created Measure E. He led on that because he wanted to see kids that are underprivileged in our area have the educational opportunities that everybody else has. He led the home run initiative that allowed people to get, uh, scholarships before the state did it, get scholarships to community college that allow people to get, uh, access to, to educational internship and paid internships to get the skills they need. He led on those things. This is about honoring somebody for giving their, their time, giving their expertise and giving their, um, good deal of their passion to our city. It is right to recognize somebody for that. We all will get honored in our own way, but this was somebody who kind of stepped up and beyond, beyond. I hope the current mayor doesn't take it as anything, um, we've, we've honored council members and mayor, former mayors prior and in those, um, and we honor all those who served in the dais. Yeah, the current, uh, the former, the first mayor has a bridge named after him, and that was consec- because he also, as our first mayor, uh, Mike McGowan, uh, we named the Mike McGowan Bridge after him for acknowledging and recognizing his, uh, efforts, um, early in our, in our iteration as a city and as a supervisor. And this is an extension of that. And at some point, somebody on this dais may deserve the same recognition for their long tenure and consequence, consequential years serving and leading. And I think that is something that, um, as, as an elected body and as, as the representatives of our city, we should, we should honor. It is something certainly that being an elected official, being a public official, being in public service can be hard, it can be tenuous, it can be, uh, terribly, terribly, um, um, for me, it has been, um, it's been a big part of my life. And again, I, for somebody, uh, to see somebody do it for 24 years and as mayor for 18, directly elected from the voter shows, um- And again, for somebody, to see somebody do it for 24 years and as mayor for 18, directly elected from the voter shows, we should respect that. So again, I appreciate the comments and I certainly knew that not everybody would agree with it. But I think that's certainly something the city has, the city council has the opportunity to recognize somebody who provided a great amount of leadership for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other council members who would like to speak? No? An opportunity to share your thoughts about why this?
Yeah, I do. There's a saying that says, everyone who's ever taken a shower has an idea. It's the person who gets out of the shower and dries off and does something about it who makes the difference. And quite frankly, leaders don't complain about what's not working. They're the ones who celebrate what's working and find creative ways to amplify it and make it better. I'm not here to discuss the virtues of someone's character and humanity. I think that we all have our own opinions about who we like and who we don't like. But I'm a little, I have never in the time that I have sat on this dais ever seen the amount of vitriol exposed publicly. Clearly, we are all here because those who took the time to speak out on this are really showing the tremendous impact that Christopher Cabaldin has made on their lives. But frankly, I got to give credit where credit is due. Only the ones that aren't rowing have time to rock the boat frankly, and I saw Christopher Cabaldin do a lot of great things for this city. There are things that people aren't going to like and they're fine. It's fantastic to hear all of the different perspectives. We're not always going to agree. And even after COVID, we're not going to agree even more because we are not seeing each other as human beings anymore. I would really love to see our city come together for the small purpose of naming a short portion of our city with minimal sign changes and addresses that were affected over someone who dedicated, truly dedicated his life to this city. And just as a side point, our Gateway Place is there because of Christopher Cabaldin. So the Afghan community who lives there get the opportunity to be a part of our great city because of a vision of this leader. So just want to take a moment to say a few things. I've learned a lot about serving the city because I had the great opportunity of sitting next to Christopher Cabaldin on this dais. Whether or not I agreed with his decisions, that's beside the point. But I did learn about integrity. I learned about equity. I learned about standing up for what you believe in despite whether or not the masses are completely behind you. And I appreciated the fact that when you have a vision and you want to do big changes, you are going to get backlash. And back in 2020, when I was looking at the opportunity to not run again for the city because frankly, this is a lot of work. This is a lot of work and it doesn't get a lot of thanks. I was encouraged. I was encouraged by the idea of seeing certain things to fruition, right? And I saw that he had put in so much work all those years and sacrificed that much. And I thought, you know what? It's worth another term. I'm going to give it a go. Win or lose, I win. And here we are. The greatness of a community is really accurately measured by the compassion of its members. And the final proof of that is how we acknowledge the people who step forward in times when people otherwise wouldn't do so. I don't know how many times I've heard, I wouldn't do that. And I know I could speak on behalf of all of the council members here. Christopher Cabaldin has done some great things in West Sacramento, but he's also done some things outside of West Sacramento. And his existence has really put West Sacramento in the map internationally. He led as West Sac Mayor for a record-setting and historic two-plus decades and transformed the complexion of our city with his vision. We have been recognized as the biggest small city, the most livable city, the most interesting small city and one of the world's 21 smart cities to watch. Under his leadership, we deployed entrepreneurial strategies to social challenges. One of which was, and my colleague, Mr. Ledesma, Councilmember Ledesma will say, climate change. To reinvent the complexion of our city and how we move in this city in order to make ourselves, our bodies more healthy, our air more healthy, our city a model internationally for how other people can do it. There is nothing that we're doing tonight that precludes us from revisiting, not revisiting, from visiting opportunities to name spaces after people who made a tremendous impact. There's space in this city to recognize leaders of all types. And I agree, there are a fantastic amount of people who have contributed greatly. And I want to see their name represented. Tonight, I am completely honored to have the opportunity to make this tribute. And I look forward to having the opportunity to vote on others who have made those contributions. Tonight, we're getting an opportunity to honor a pioneer who integrated transportation, land use, environmental justice, housing, air quality and climate change. He's brought to us numerous federal government and national awards. And he was a champion for some of California's most sweeping transportation and climate reforms in the past two decades. More importantly, and this is personal, Christopher Cabaldin is a fantastic supporter of women leaders and I am evidence of that. And I can speak for many people who are leading not only in this city, but in their industries, in their businesses throughout the region, throughout the state, who have been inspired and mentored and championed by that man. So with that, if there's no further comment, and I will yield, I would like to make the motion to move this forward. Actually, I will yield the motion to my colleague.
We'll put the motion on the table. Right now, we still have comments from.
That's fine. I just wanted to yield that to Mr. Ledesma, who brought this to our dais.
Remember early, Councilmember Alcala?
I've already spoke, Mayor. It really breaks my heart to hear the oppression and the pain that people are feeling today in our community. I'm going to start with that. And to know that there is some history of oppression due to a number of factors in my experience as a social worker. It's a combination of, you know, institutional racism in so many ways, redlining, oppression is, you know, in the educational setting, you know, school to prison pipeline. There's a history of that and it's pervasive and it's still a fight. No matter who's in elected office, there is still a fight to address that. And that's one of the reasons why I am here. In making the decision on the night that I, you know, actually the day that everyone recognized that I had won the election and Mayor Cabaldin had made the phone call and congratulated me. And I was very appreciative. I had made a commitment to recognize his memory and his work, his legacy here in West Sacramento. And I made that commitment to do that. And Councilmember Ledesma, hold second, right after that and asked for that. And I said, absolutely, I had already made that commitment. And it was going to be something that we would all come together and agree on. The timing was really unclear, but I think with Councilmember Ledesma, who had made a decision to not run another term, I think it's the time now, the right time. And so, and I'd like for Councilmember Ledesma to have the opportunity to be fully present in recognizing our past mayor. To say that the past mayor hasn't, you know, done anything impactful in my life would be a lie because he gave me the opportunity to serve on so many boards and commissions, was very supportive and engaging. And we had good conversations about the future of the city and his vision of what he'd like to see accomplished. And it was always something that I carried even in my campaign messaging. The mayor and I have a lot in common. There's not that much where we disagree on other than some things that I feel like we need to make improvements on engagement and bridging some equity gaps that I have seen and canvassing in areas and parts of the community that have felt neglected. And I felt like we do need to make some impactful changes. And that was going to be a priority mine. It still continues to be. But in looking at what the mayor has done and speaking recently to a group of people and researching the history, it's a lot of what the mayor did, especially during redevelopment, the collapse of the redevelopment agency and what we needed to do to continue to grow and succeed as a community. And we were the first city establishing the enhanced infrastructure financing district in the state of California. And that was under the mayor's leadership in establishing a work group to say, let's come up with a plan. And that was something that the mayor did. He was a risk taker and willing to do a deep dive with the staff who I think appreciated his leadership in allowing them the opportunity to be creative and to have creative financing mechanisms in our city, which is now the envy of many cities around the nation as we are continuing to develop even during a recession that we're walking into. Even in the past recession, it was a little bit of a bump in the road, but we're continuing to move forward. What it brings is housing, jobs. The first affordable housing project and the first major project in the riverfront was West Gateway Place. And I was there for the groundbreaking ceremony. I was there to hear from the California Housing and Community Department the relationships that I saw that the mayor and staff had cultivated and what we continue to cultivate today. That's due to the mayor's interest in providing what we have our 10% inclusionary housing trust fund. It's an inclusionary requirement for all the housing. And that's under the mayor's leadership that we have inclusionary housing and it is preserved. And a housing trust fund to continue to have affordable housing, which is very rare in jurisdictions because I've researched that as well. It is rare to have that in other jurisdictions. You see city council members fighting it. It's a necessity in order for us to house people who can afford to live it, especially with the wages we have today. So we are bridging that gap with the affordable housing that we are building. And another one is on the way, thanks to the history on Green Means Go, where the mayor, again, with the leadership of the council, and I was fortunate to start stepping up into that and also fortunate as the planning commissioner, mayor appointed me to be the planning commissioner where I was chair and Russ Lee Biggs is here, who joined me in building, you know, making sure that we had a general plan for the future of a city that included all sorts of housing types, affordable, smaller. We have project kind, which is the below market rate housing. And that's thanks due to the impact fees being lower. The impact fee is a very creative mechanism to build housing in order for us to be able to ensure that a developer can afford to build housing. That is really hard to find. And we're doing it now and expanding it based on that experiment in the Bridge District citywide in the future. And now it's just in the riverfront, but citywide and for commercial. And the commercial is extremely important for employment here in the city so that people don't have to drive too far and that people have jobs. And other opportunities that I've seen is the Home Run Program. Now, I wasn't the biggest fan of the Home Run in the way it was operating, but I love the Home Run in that I did see it opportunity. And the city staff has also expanded access. As you see some sponsored ads now saying, if you just fulfill any of these criteria, if you go to any one of our events, you will qualify for a $1,000 scholarship. And I'm really grateful that, you know, the mayor did establish the Home Run Program. And I was also serving on the Universal Kindergarten Preschool Board. Mayor appointed me there. He pulled me out of a couple of commissions. He said, I want you to go here. I want you to sit here. I was very curious to see what his vision was there. And that was First Five LA, First Five LA, sorry, that's my LA hat, First Five Yolo County. And First Five Yolo County and the relationship he cultivated with the county there so that we can have early education. It's not childcare. It's education, quality education for our little young learners. And that's what the mayor established here. That's what I learned that was going on. And then we continue to have Justine Jimenez and our staff who started back then and continues. And I just love the passion and the dedication and the commitment, the longstanding commitment that our staff continue because they saw and built these wonderful programs. And that's their goal is to continue to have quality childcare, not just childcare, quality early education for those young learners. And my little grandson has benefited from one of those. When he was blowing out during summer school, when we were, sorry, summer programming, when we were all trying to go back into, you know, trying to exit out of COVID and going into the summer program, he was blowing up behaviorally. And I know that that's a pervasive issue. But, you know, I went into one of those programs. The little grandson was thriving in one of those programs. So I know that directly I benefited and I claimed credit for contributions that I feel the mayor was the leader, but he brought in a team of people. And I think, I think out of all of us, I was one of the most involved because I love the city. But I also was a front seat person to watch what the mayor did. Yeah, there's some history here that we're all not proud of sometimes. But there's other history that I'm on the front row watching. Now, here's the rest of it that I benefited as the mayor. And I have to, I just have to always acknowledge that we did have an awesome mayor in those venues. When I go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors and I saw what he accomplished, now he's a mover and shaker. He definitely excelled in that area. And he accomplished positions. Now, why is that important? Now, I'm a public policy person. It's important to carry your agenda in elevating what's important for your city at the federal level. That's why that's important. It's bringing other mayors along in a coalition to back the agenda for your city to succeed. We are a little city back then when he first started. We've grown significantly, still a little city in magnitude. When you go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, it's like going to the convention center and having a bunch of mayors. Everybody with their different personalities are trying to excel. Christopher Cabaldin was one of the few who stood out and everybody will comment to me, man, he did some incredible work. Very intelligent man. Education, housing, so many other policies. I can't remember them all. But he was an innovator and he stimulated innovation in many other cities. Transportation is another one. So he had a lot. He was a reader. He reads and he studies and understands. So yes, his personality wasn't, you know, I'm a social worker. I'm a people person. He was a person who, you know, being in the public was not the easiest thing for him. There's a major difference between the two of us. But I have to say that what he accomplished when he was publicly speaking and sharing was very persuasive and engaging and getting people to understand some really deep thinking of what's important for their communities. Not only implementing it here locally, but seeing what we can do to apply it at a national level. And that's why he was recognized in so many ways at the national level. And seeing that and also as Councilmember Ledesma pointed out in Secog, in the formation of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments where we are a pipeline to receive federal funding sources, state funding sources. It was a food fight for all the local jurisdictions and we are a small city. Yolo County is, you know, another representative, Sacramento, Sacramento City. Yolo County is, you know, another representative, Sacramento, Sacramento City and County, Placer and all the other jurisdictions along this area. It was challenging, and he was in the front row fighting to make sure that we had an equal voice at the table and we were not dismissed in getting our share of allocation of funding so that our city could continue to grow. And we receive and benefit a lot of that at this point in time. And I got to say, looking at the Green Means Go designation that we received early, and we were one of the first few cities to achieve that. Now, there's $37 million coming from the state. And we received cap and trade funding for the second round of our West Gateway Place housing. And that's going to provide supportive housing for individuals. That's going to provide, it's going to be a mixed use, so our Housing and Community Development Department's going to be going there. So it's going to provide space for more staff, and it's going to be a great opportunity for supportive housing for individuals that can't afford it. So I know historically that the mayor has contributed quite a bit. And I explained to a lot of people that I couldn't speak to them individually today, that I would share my thoughts on why I'm supporting tonight's decision. And these are the reasons why. I'm not turning a blind eye on what's happened in the past and things that, on how people have been impacted. I will do what I can to, you know, bridge those gaps and mend those areas that I feel people are hurting. I think that's important, too. And again, that's me being a social worker, it's just my trait, it's just who I am. But I just want to show, you know, my appreciation for those that came out in support and for those that came out to oppose, for both sides. And also, I think it's important that we stop the divisiveness in the city, because we need to come together. And my vote here is an olive branch. Asking all of you to put the hate behind us and move forward together. It's hard, as mayor, to see this happening to our city. I want us to get along. I want this hate to go behind us. And I'm the mayor here to help you out, all of us here, so let's do this together. You know, I remember when the boat dock was designated to Ettenish Salik, Native American who grew up here, you know, delivering food to the poor, a farmer. And we have that today among our farmers. You know why? That's something Christopher established. He established our urban farming program he gave out of his own pocket and contributed to that. So, yeah, you know, he has his faults. We all do. None of us are perfect. But that's being an elected official, you're a human being, you're not a robot. So I would like for us to work more collaboratively. Let's make this happen. Thank you for taking the opportunity for those of you who remain to listen. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Can I say one thing?
Yes, you may.
This was really hard for me, because I know, we just heard a lifetime's worth of work, and this is basically a volunteer job, and you know that. It is a $250 stipend a month, and what we just heard was 24 years of dedication to our city in changing literally the fabric. He mentored you, mayor, he mentored council member Mayor Potem Arosco. And if it were not for not only his policies, but also his encouragement in seeking out specifically women of color to serve on commissions, on boards here in our city, to cultivate a pipeline of leadership for folks from all walks of life, then I wouldn't be here. And I struggle because I think, is it that we just don't know? Or how is it possible that someone who dedicated literally their life to our city could inspire such vitriol? Because he, for me, he spoke with his actions. It is the inclusionary program that allowed me to be here. That's how I was able to move to this city, was because we had low-income housing in which someone who was very, very poor and a single mom just trying to cobble their way through graduate school could actually come here and be a part of this amazing, amazing community. And it is so, it is what it is because of the leadership that we saw. And as you said, he did not do alone, you were part of that. You were part of that leadership. Ledesma, you were part of that leadership, you know. But without the vision and without someone who was willing to do all of the additional, all of the additional work, then we would not be where we are today. I am deeply hurt by the divisiveness that I have experienced in wanting to just step up and serve my community. And I have been hurt in seeing the divisiveness and the vitriol that has been directed to all of you, because again, this is us giving of ourselves and of our time to just do what's right for the community, no other reason. There's nothing else you get from this. And I would hope that if I dedicated 24 years of my life to the city, that we would be able to acknowledge and recognize that as well. I am very touched by your words and by everyone's words today, and I really do hope that we can move past this, because this wasn't what it was when I moved here. This is not the West Sacramento I recognize. And I am really hopeful that we can come together, because we truly are stronger together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can-
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. For the folks at home or folks in the audience, I don't think I could have articulated the impact of Mayor Cabaldin's everyday life, as well as the mayor just did in the past 15, 20 minutes, whatever that was. I wasn't timing you. And we can, having lived it with him for 12 years and 10 years before that on planning commission, we all pulled our own weight in our own way. I have one quibble with the fact that you brought up, mayor, which is the post-redevelopment task. I had to convince him to do that, just for the record. But he saw the need to do it, and thanks to him, and frankly, thanks to our city manager today, we have the tools and that vision to kind of move forward. We have the tools to remedy a lot of things you articulated you want to fix. Tonight's about former Mayor Cabaldin. He's still in our community. We're like, he's still here. You can go to a local coffee shop, local restaurant, and he's much more relaxed and much appreciative of his city, and he loves the city. He's become a friend. And when you go through a couple of recessions, pandemic, tragic shooting, and a couple of tragic shootings, and you bond. And I would just, I think your comments, mayor, about how precious this service is and how, as stewards of the city, how we and you, it's you going forward, it won't be me anymore, it'll be you. It's a lesson. We're only as good as those before us, and those after us are only as good as we are in the moment. There's a bunch of leaders, I see young people here, I see folks here that love West Sacramento in their own way and want to contribute, and you just got a real great history lesson about the actions one person who dedicated his life to public service did for us. The great thing about a city, it's never finished. It's never finished. It's always, always keeping them moving, adapting to the times, and adapting to the values of its council and its leaders. A great table has been set for this council, and the next council that will be coming in next month. And a lot of the things you want to work on, and all of you want to work on in your neighborhoods that we all know it, we couldn't get to it all. But that's the work you get to do next. And I appreciate you conveying, and then really, again, it's a real lesson about the breadth of work that was done to pave the way for West Sacramento to get to where it is. And it's not an acknowledgement that we're perfect today, because we're not. We wouldn't be here if it was perfect. But I really want to say thank you for that acknowledgement and that, and your support on this. You were supportive from the very first time I bought you a beer at Bug Dog, and I said, congratulations, you won, and you agreed to that, and you agreed to it again when I wanted to see if we can, after, again, this process, it just, and it is, but for the public, I'm wanting to, this is acknowledgement of those folks of, again, this is a volunteer job. And we're all the way from our families again tonight. And if you find somebody to come take the seat, that's one thing. You find somebody who can lead a city from where we've been to where we are today, knowing that much better is going to come, and you have leaders who will acknowledge that legacy, take it and run with it, as the mayor just outlined, that's something else. And so I probably make the motion to move this forward, because we need to acknowledge those who came before in the public sphere. And I don't disagree, Mayor Potem Arosco, that there's opportunities to acknowledge others. It's just a matter of, we're finally back together in public and can do these things. So again, with that, Madam Mayor, thank you for your support and your wise words and your heartfelt words, and make the motion to approve the item.
Yes. Councilmember Ledesma moved, Mayor Potem Arosco second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
No.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Arosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, thank you. This item is approved. We have no regular agenda items, so we will next go to our general administration function and part two, council communications. Any updates from anybody's communication?
I do.
Okay.
Briefly. On November 9th, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and the Sewer District met and had a brief meeting regarding the district merger. There is going to be a merging of the Sewer District and the Sanitation District for a lot of reasons. Right now, they operate as two independent bodies. We take votes separately. There are, you know, for the most part, the regional sanitation board is larger than Sewer District, but there, with respect to how we run our business and trying to make it a lot more efficient and making sure resources go pretty far, we're going to move forward with a different function. We also talked about our Echo Water Project. We got the quarterly report, as well as the Harvest Water Project. And we did, I think I've mentioned in the past that there are a variety of different programs that the sanitation board puts together. I know I called it a milk thing, but anyhow, I, the, I'm not going to get it right, so I'm not going to even try it now, but there, we are forwarding the information along so that we can make sure West Sacramento is on the board. Right now, both Oscar Vegas and I, Supervisor Vegas and I, are the representatives. We speak both for the county and for the city of West Sacramento. But I really want to make sure that we are able to partake in the efforts of the board, because there are a lot of really great amenities that our kids in the community can benefit from. Our executive commission on homelessness, they did not meet. Last two meetings, we weren't able to establish quorum, but we will have an upcoming meeting, and I will be reporting on that shortly.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Arosco. And we did have a point in time count, which shows our point in time count increased slightly. And hopefully, I'm hoping to hear from staff about, a little more about that. I've been asking a lot of questions and interested in some more background on that. I know they had a presentation. Right, any other?
I do.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Yes. Not to be more modeling or whatever, but I had, this past Monday was my last meeting on the Yolo County Transportation District Board of Directors. And nothing really of consequence to, on the agenda, we revised, staff provided, revised our vision, values, and priority statement as we begin the strategic planning session. They went through one-year goals and the six-to-12-month milestones they're planning, and then an update on their Woodland Service planning update, and also on the branding. And I'm going to leave the council with this, because I won't be able to give another update. This was, it's very emblematic where YCTD is. I want to thank all the folks, Jason's not here anymore, but the folks and staff that have been helping me serve on that board for the past however many years, since 2014 I've been on the Yolo Bus. And some of the discussions we had to tell you the impact of West Sacramento, Woodlands planning around their on-demand service that they are planning, and they cited West Sacramento's VIA program, which we started in 2018 as the model. We talked about the branding of YCTD, which is we're taking on many more projects than we've done, building bike head and active transportation, mobility, and they're broadening their sphere of influence around those areas where they were only focused on fixed route routes and buses before. And I would say to my colleagues, as you go about the process of the new council, again, just a lot of good work has been done at Yolo Bus, and now YCTD. They're going to rebrand themselves to show a broader them, and care for it because they care for us. We haven't always agreed, but I think they've, that district is coming along and providing real mobility options and could be a great platform going forward. The leadership is there, and the new staff and new executive director. So it's a real privilege to serve and represent all of the voters on YCTD, all of you on that, but I just wanted to sign that off, and good luck for the next representative of YCTD. Thank you. Aaron's smirking. Who would have thought that eight years ago, like YCTD's in a better place, but it is. It's been a much better-
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma, for your service on those council assignments. I know it, people don't realize that in addition to serving on city council, we have council assignments. They're listed here on our general administration function, part two. And they're numerous, and it is always beneficial when a council member has that institutional knowledge and experience and is able to shepherd, you know, progress and change that benefits, you know, the community. I recall when you were a part of a process to engage the community in finding out what are improvements we can make to our bus routes, our bus routes with our big buses, and then VIA came along and, you know, kind of showed what Yolo County Transit, with the support of Secog, that we can, you know, improve, you know, on-demand ride-sharing opportunities. And that is, you know, definitely something that your contribution here has benefited a lot of residents, especially our older ones. Thank you so much for your service. No other, okay.
I was just going to say, I have Safeguard tomorrow.
You have Safeguard tomorrow. Okay, good. So Secog met on October 10th, and we have a few action items that took place. The board elected new leaders, so now our Sacramento supervisor, Patrick Kennedy, is the chair. And I was a part of the selection committee for our vice chair, and we selected the city of Placerville Vice Mayor, Michael Saragosa. I think some of you met him at Cap to Cap. He attends the League of Cities event, so he's definitely engaged and experienced, and so we're really happy with that selection. We also approved the first round of funding for Green Means Go for $3.2 million allocated to projects in the early stages of infill development. As you know, we're not one of those. So we're hoping to apply for the future stages of those that are, you know, able to, you know, benefit from $37 million that came out of the state. And so, you know, we have projects in line that we're thinking about applying this for, and I have full confidence staff is going to get us a grant. And so we also approved the extension of the timeline for the blueprint plan update for the region's metropolitan- for the region's metropolitan transportation plan, sustainable community strategy to include more input. And, uh, in addition, yesterday, I was the keynote speaker on behalf of the U.S. Conference of Mayors and CEOs for the U.S. Housing Investment Business Leaders at the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco Housing Solutions Summit, where I shared the successes of housing construction citywide and, um, the solutions that supported these efforts. I have to say that I, I did spend quite a bit of time listening to, you know, uh, our staff in past meetings. It was a learning curve for me, but so I, I appreciate all the, all the work in the history that, um, helped us achieve, you know, I think in the last few years that we've achieved 1,100 new housing units, um, as a result of what we've accomplished in the past years and, um, and then our recent changes to expand that. So this is, um, something that I will share that a lot of people in, um, this event, it included bankers, um, investors, uh, and, and other local government, um, and we had a chance to, um, sit with, uh, you know, um, member of the government, sorry, the governor's horseshoe, Jason. And, uh, Jason who works on housing and homelessness and chat with him a little bit about what's happening in the future. It's gonna look really tough, but, um, but just be able to connect with others about what, what West Sacramento is doing and continuing to bring this. And this is another one of those, um, extracurricular activities that our mayor was participating in. Uh, and I just jumped right in to try to fill in and continue to share the good work that we're doing. Um, all right, this brings us to, uh, to our council calendar.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a reminder that, uh, Friday, December 2nd is the holiday tree lighting ceremony and event, and that's gonna be out front of city hall, start, starting at 6:00 P.M.
I think we also have our November 19th, um, Yolo County Children's Alliance giveaway. I think some members will be participating.
Saturday.
Saturday.
One thing.
Starting at 8:00. You have one thing?
Yeah, I said I forgot one thing, that we had the color of music last night.
Oh, that's right. We had the color of music here last, go ahead. Did you wanna share?
I will share, uh, I just, um, so one, I wanna thank staff. Because when, um, I connected with you all and said, "Hey, can we do this?", uh, you, you guys immediately figured out a way to create space, um, so that this wonderful festival could, could have opening night here in our city. And I, um, just felt so honored to be a part of, um, this wonderful experience in which, um, black musicians from all over the world, not even just from the United States, but all over the world, came and played here at our city hall and played music, um, classical music composed, uh, by black composers from, again, generations ago, um, that didn't at the time have the notoriety here in the United States because of all of the racism, um, that was happening at that time. And so to be able to participate as a region with city of Sacramento, again, thank you, Councilmember Rick Jennings for including us. And I, I hope that this will be an annual, um, thing that we can participate with our regional partners, with city of Sacramento and actually also, um, with Davis, um, because it is important, the arts are important, culture is important, and acknowledging all of our, our cultures is important. And this is, is one way that, that city of West Sacramento was able to do that and bring that to our community. Um, so I just, I wanna say thank you to the staff, thank you to the council members that came, thank you, Mayor, um, for coming. It really was a special night.
Thank you so much, um, Councilmember Early for bringing this, um, beautiful, you know, concert. Uh, I, I purchased a couple of tickets and then found out I had two more, so I was like, "I'm gonna give my two to somebody so they can enjoy it as well." And, uh, then I found out that there were more tickets that were being distributed, um, to, to our, um, high school, you know, choir.
That was United Way. So United Way, we purchased, um, 23 tickets for Washington Unified School District.
That's great.
ACE's parents and, and students to be able to come because, you know, these are, are individuals and families that maybe would normally not have access to something like this. And so that was important. Thanks.
And they were, they were invited to go to the Friday, um, and we had the opening night, so that was very special. And, uh, Friday, they're all excited about going to the next one. Uh, and, and the black musicians, um, are so talented, I mean, and, and it's just sad and, you know, historically, they, they haven't been able to be a part of, you know, sharing, um, the stage with others. But here today, sharing our city hall and their music and their talent with us and us being, it was a very spiritual experience for me, just being able to listen to the music and feeling how it touched, you know, me deeply. It was a wonderful opportunity to just be at a moment of peace and tranquility here in our city hall. So that was a great opportunity, thank you for doing that and doing the work behind that. That'll be your, your annual thing.
Got it.
So there you go. Okay, um, next is, uh, okay, council calendar, we already did that, city manager report?
Our report tonight, thank you.
All right, city attorney report? And we have no future agenda item request by council. And so I, I do have a question. There was a comment brought up about no public comment during this period. Can you provide some clarification on that, um, city attorney or city manager?
Well, it is an, it is an agendized item, so if there were public comments that people wanted to make, they would submit a comment card like any other and identify that item they wanted to speak on.
And also just note that when there are future item requests, um, they're actually placed on the agenda under that section. So, uh, for example, if, if you make a request and, uh, I'm sorry, let me back up. If, if a council member makes a request via the process, it's usually an email to me. Um, there's a deadline before the next meeting. Uh, we place a line item on that agenda under future item requests by council, uh, so it is clear that it's on the agenda for that meeting. Uh, like Jeff said, um, someone who turns in a speaker card for that item would be able to speak on it, just like any other agenda item. Then the item comes back at a regular council meeting. We don't typically set the date for that because it's kind of on, on us to figure out, you know, staff-wise, we have the capacity to, uh, bring it back and win and so, um, but it, then it comes back as a regular agenda item.
And it, it is important to make the point that the action that was taken in October was simply the council's agreement to have a future agenda where the council could act. There were no, wasn't an action to approve something other than to put it back.
Right. Which creates another opportunity for public comment.
I see. I, I do recall one time under the future agenda item where, um, we were engaging in a conversation about it and I think we were prevented from doing so, um, to go into any depth about that. But it's good to know that, um, I can ask for public comment and maybe should moving forward under this.
Yeah. And, and on that point, again, the, the point of that item is to simply get consensus to place the item on a future agenda for an actual staff report and discussion. So i- in that instance, you're referring to, I think the guidance we were providing was that it was, it was sort of getting outside of the, of the decision to put it on a future agenda. It was actually getting into the substance of the item.
I see.
That was why.
Okay, good to know. Thank you for the clarification. Madam Clerk, I gather there's no, um, an open of a public comment, there are no requests to speak? No, ma'am. Thank you closing the public comment from now on. Thank you so much. All right, and with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Can I say something, Mayor?
Nope.
Is this gonna be your last meeting, Chris? No.
It's not your last meeting, don't even try.
Okay.
This is my last full meeting, so I think, um-
So we'll save our comments for later.
Oh, well, yeah. I thought, I thought he was gonna be here.
They're good ones.
He's gonna be here on the, in the December one.
Yeah, so if, if I can back up to my manager's report to give a, a brief summary of, of the plan. So, uh, we're obviously still waiting on certification of, of results and that is a, that is a formality that we need to have, um, to schedule swearing in. Uh, regardless though, on the 7th, uh, we will have a council meeting and it will be, my understanding is it'll be Councilmember Ledesma's effective last meeting, no matter what happens. We'll, we're planning to do a proclamation and, and all that, all that typical stuff. But, uh, um, there will be a meeting on the 7th and, uh, we'll provide more information to the council once the elections office, um, gives us a better idea of when the certification will happen, about what will occur that night.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.